All meeting order, today is May thirteenth, six P M. We're going to start out with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
Ms. Johnson, will you do, we'll call please?
Mayor Ivan.
Here.
Councilmember Brian.
Here.
Councilmember Glazer.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville. Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
I have Lieutenant Bangater.
Here.
I have Engineer Nelson.
Here.
I have Planner Nash.
Here.
All right, and the consultant Lori Jaeger will be here about six thirty. Assistant Veilia Stoffel, here, and myself, Natalie.
All right. Thank you very much. So next on the list is the code of conduct. The code of conduct is posted at the back of the room. We're not going to read it over tonight. So I'd like to move on to approving the agenda. Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
I passed three things earlier and they put buttons in the back. Under three F, the documents that were to a company that that RCA were not in the packet, so if there's anyone in part of that. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And then three G should be corrected to read approval of resolution twenty twenty five establishing ad hoc committees. And then under new business, I would ask that we add an RCA and resolution, which I said handed out establishing an ad hoc committee for the purpose of the redesign of the veterans memorial in Northern Park.
So are you pulling G, three G out?
No, the three G is just establishing committee, an ad hoc, ad hoc committees as needed. The fourteen is specific to the design. If somebody wants to pull it out and have a conversation, that's fine. I'm just wanted to clarify how it should be read on the 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 policies that I wrote out are already in the packet. And the guidelines and policies, the guidelines.
Okay. One for, I would like to pull out is three C. I would like to remove that one from tonight's packet altogether. So we have time to discuss this of the council greater than that we're going to solve it tonight. I think that's when we shall tell June. We've got an end date of June thirtieth. Now I don't want to wait till June thirtieth to get it resolved, but I think there's work inspection that needs to go into it. That was my thought.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer, go ahead.
I have something to add to the administrator's update, and it's a proposal from Minnesota Metal Exteriors for the re-roof or overlay of roofs at, at Park for the four metal pavilions. And I can, I have one for each of the council members, and I can provide one for the back of the room.
That would be great. So that would become fourteen, I'm sorry, thirteen E. That part of or somewhere else.
That is something.
Metal roof will be thirteen A.
Thirteen A.
A thirteen B A. Right, you want to put that, that would be just fine. Councilmember Brian, do you have anything to add or subtract?
Not at this moment, no.
Councilmember Swenson. All right, we'll get, Councilmember Glazer, just a moment here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there are no additional changes. Additional inspections, relations to the agenda, I move it as amended.
We have the motion to amend it for all the conversations, which is remove three C. Let's see if we can quick do a summary of it. We have a thirteen B A addition by Councilmember Glazer. We have an addition of fourteen G by Councilmember Rainville. Think that covers it all? So with that, I would second your motion. We'll take it to vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. All right, we'll move into the public forum. Do you have anyone can grab the sheet, please? All right, signed up for tonight's meeting to speak. First one is Paul Engelbrückson. Please come up to the mic, make sure the mic is on. State your name and your address, and then we have three minutes to send your message, please.
My name is Paul Engelbrückson. I live at sixteen, six three, two hundred and third Avenue, North West. And I'm here today to A, ask some guidance and B, apologize a little bit to and to Pro. So my wife and I built our house ten years ago on nine point eight nine acres, hold on, nine third. And with the idea that we're going to be able to build a pool bar and do all these other things that we want to do in order to relax and all that. Well, first of all, we our former city planner, who's no longer with us, and it's on me. He had pointed out where I can build my pool bar, the only place I'm talking. I knew that I had full permit to build the pool bar, but I didn't have to build the wall and everything, you know, all that. So unbeknownst to me, not knowing that I built on the easement for utilities and an easement for range and also what the city states is wetlands. I built my wall. Waited for three years. Went through the permitting process and started to do everything. Come to find out that I built my wall on wetlands and easement. With that being said, I went to the D N R first, where the city said the wetland question is state protected public water basin. I'm just gonna leave it at that because that's what the city has said. According to the D N R, which I'm eleven here, states the wetland setback requirement that you asked to evolve is a local government ordinance, not a state requirement. Local governments need to adopt norms, strict standards of the state. So any clarification, A, not tonight, obviously, on whether I really am in wetlands and why the city has given wetlands with the state that's not. And then B, also the fact that I'm on eight point nine acres and the D N R says my wetlands are literally seven acres past where my property. So I would like to finish building my two thousand square foot pool bar in the area that I have selected. I do not want to do a variance because A, I already wrote a check of point five hundred for the engineer doing site survey, nothing but twenty five hundred dollars. That went to the city for an estimate, which I have no idea what happened. So all I ask is what will you guys take a look and say, okay, this utility easement, the water, the drainage easement, so it could go all the way, and utility easement, all utilities are already in. So that's all I ask from the city is to please, I'm throwing myself on mercy. I don't know what to do. And the city asked me to pray as far as guiding me and trying to vacation with me and I don't know. My prayers.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks. May I ask how we do, man?
Uh, next one up is Steve Shute. Sorry.
The video can run with them. She's met six, two, three, two, three, nine, personally, or less. And I apologize, I'm really thrilled to be able to attend tonight, so I moved this together last minute, so it's not a little fine tune, might jump out on a few things. But I'll try to make it within three minutes. First call, we do want, my wife and I sue, do want knowledge, you guys all have been, oh yeah, dealing with forty five hundred residents. Good way to get the real, the fact that it wants and needs. So we do appreciate it. My wife and I have moved now that we're firing a small town atmosphere, now fixed income. Horrible. However, since January, seeing the council discussions are a lot about spending, increasing payroll costs actually drastically and raising taxes. Recently are hearing talk about a budget shortfall. I don't know, let me guys go a little bit, heard of why it happened and what the problem is, and just been willing soon. Just seems like more and more spending. Staff situation, city of all, two bus, city of Sasso. My wife and I own our business thirty eight years. Three years old, made thirty five employees. Busy, and we got by with a lot of staff. Obviously, the city is a lot different, but we think staff situation is a success. Councilmember Rainville, we know us still working the office quite a bit. She obviously has a lot of expertise and things, but why you should be needed? We've got competent people, that is very competent, really understaffed, competent, why are you still there? And I remember recently the past council members, we've been coming to help with this type of project, that's something really behind. And I did hear that in the past from a mayor, mayor Pion, he threw in there, and at some point was asked to stay away or whatever, which he did. I think there's just too much interaction there between council and staff. Back to payroll costs. Overtime is huge. Now you guys are talking about A, overtime after an eight hour day, if I read correctly, versus a forty hour week, thirty eight hour week. You don't pay overtime on a daily basis. It's absolutely ridiculous. And you don't pay overtime when you pay time off is involved. P T O, if you're not leaving office work, you don't pay overtime on, that's way excessive. Also, keep in mind, with all the raises that you give to people, I believe, if I remember correctly, they get a five to cost of living, increase every year on that, too. Also, with increased costs, particularly more in the maintenance department, not some staff. I believe you guys are paying workers' comp from the maintenance department, if I'm correct, and all workers' compensation on what you I know, yeah, sort of go off the stat and reach.
It's nice.
But the boys in the bathroom, their, their workers' comp is quite a bit higher, and that's based very often on payroll. So
Can you wrap up in the next thirty seconds?
Okay. We want to, well, our support again for special election, the S V P. And I've heard something recently, some of these guys have been getting the things in, more training and education to generate new people, think that's really good. But please, uh, be mindful of the cost of employees, and I know those thanks a lot for the year, but please try to keep it down. Thank you.
Please turn that microphone back on. Next up is Paula Coffey.
Paula Coffey, one eight seven three five, Clary Road. I want to speak about the employee handbook policy change, page four hundred and fifty eight of tonight's agenda packet. So thank you all council members for what you do. That packet is huge. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to be clear. I strongly oppose, oppose change the city's overtime policy. Including paid time off, P T O, and holiday hours in overtime calculations is costly and a necessary shift. One that this city simply cannot afford. This proposal is financially irresponsible. For a city of our size and limited resources, expanding overtime eligibility in this way would create a permanent and growing burden on our budget. It's not just a short term expense, it's a long term liability. Let's be honest, the Fair Labor Standard Act already provides a fair and clear standard. Overtime is earned when employees actually work over forty hours in a week. Just because a city gives employees paid time off for holidays, vacation time, and sick time, those are not considered hours worked. Under the F L S A, and do not need to be included in total hours worked for overtime purposes. That's the law. Our current policy aligns with this federal baseline, and there's no compelling reason to go beyond it. Changing this policy to count unworked hours as worked for overtime purposes is not just physically reckless, it's not legally required. This isn't about denying fair pay. It's about protecting our financial stability and making smart targeted investments. If we want to talk about additional payroll dollars, they need to go where they'll make the greatest impact. Raising wages for our firefighters. That's where we face real recruitment and retention challenges. That's where we improve public safety. That's where the need is urgent. Spending more on inflated overtime calculations benefits few, costs much, and risks diverting funds away from higher priorities. We should not commit to a policy that puts our budget at greater risk and undermines our ability to deliver essential services. If the workload is consistently requiring overtime, perhaps the city should look at outsourcing some of these duties. It would probably cost us less. I urge the council to hold the line, stick to the federal standards, protect our budget, focus our resources where they matter most. Thank you.
Next up is Bill Allwelling. Good, thank you. Next one is Craig. Craig, can I just call you Craig, because I came at your last
Sure. I'm later, okay, I'm sorry, I'm later.
Okay, so that, is there any other open forum or public forum comments at all, anybody else that wanted to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up or sign on the wrong chief? Okay.
Mr. Mayor. May I address one of the comments that was directed towards me?
Can we close the public forum person? So first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to close the public forum. Yes, if it's appropriate, but typically, we don't give feedback on the public forums.
And so I appreciate your, your allowing me to comment about me in the office. I do volunteer in the office. It's free time for the city. I volunteer in there when they are short staff. Last week I was there and Natalie was out. There were times where only one of the administrative support persons were there, so I came in and answered phones. I did filing, I did copying, I did things that are menial, but yet needed to be done. We could ask, we could delay that work, I guess, that would be fun, that could happen, but there were things that needed to be done. And so I go in, I volunteer my time. There's nothing wrong with me volunteering my time. I do not have access to anything that anyone else on this council has access to. I do it out of the goodness of my heart. I do it to help staff. And I will continue to do it, whether people agree with that or not. Thank you.
Okay, move on to the consent agenda and approving the consent agenda. Any discussion on consent agenda, or are we still good?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move the consent agenda, agenda as amended.
Okay. One second. We got a second from the Councilmember Swenson. All right, so any discussion on it? Hearing none, let's move to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Oppose? None, motion carries. All right, so we're going to move on to number four, which is the twenty twenty four audit by creative planning. This will be led by Andy online, so if we can turn it over to Andy.
Great. Thank you for having me here tonight. I can, can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Here to present the audit results for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. I do have two documents in the agenda packet tonight, one being the communications letter and the other being the city's financial statements. Following those documents, first, starting with our independent auditors report that's included in the city's financial statements. Wanted to highlight what our role is as the city's auditor, as well as the role of management. Management does have ultimate responsibility to prepare the financial statements, including the maintenance of internal control. And it's our job as the city's auditors to come in, perform an audit in accordance with audit standards, which includes testing, examining, and looking at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in, in the financial statements. And ultimately provide an opinion as to whether we believe the financial statements to present fairly in all material respects. Happy to report that we're issuing a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. That document also includes our reporting on government auditing standards, as well as Minnesota legal compliance. There were no findings to report as it relates to Minnesota legal compliance here for two thousand twenty four. And when it comes to our internal control findings for this year, there was one finding that is at a material weakness level. That's the most severe level of internal control deficiency, and that relates to a lack of segregation of accounting duties, which means that there are certain individuals that have access to perform multiple accounting functions. It's a condition that's not unusual for a city of your size. However, it is something to continue to be aware of, as it does, does pose a risk of a potential error in the financial statements. The other document that I wanted to highlight here tonight, again, in the agenda packet is the communications letter, and really wanted to start with highlighting the financial analysis that starts on page eight. And here, we start by taking, excuse me, yeah, page eight, and it starts by taking a look at general fund revenues here over the past four years. There was a forty five thousand dollar increase in general fund revenues, an increase of about two percent. There were various changes across categories here. The most significant change occurred in intergovernmental revenue that decreased a hundred and nine thousand dollars here for two thousand twenty four, and that related to a decrease in public safety aid. Specific news, public safety aid was awarded to cities back in two thousand twenty three and not again here in two thousand twenty four. And that was offset by increases in other categories. Licenses and permits increased forty four thousand with an increase in permits issued. Investment income increased twenty five thousand with an increase in interest rates, and then miscellaneous income increased about seventy one thousand dollars, which includes donations. There was a donation for a ball, ball field sprinkler system and also a conduit debt issuance fee that drove the variance here for two thousand twenty four. Overall, going on to page nine in the communications letter, the over, the revenue sources by source remained fairly consistent between the two years, with the majority of general fund revenues coming from taxes, which make up seventy four percent of general fund revenues, followed by licenses and permits at about eight percent, and intergovernmental revenues at approximately seven percent of total general fund revenues. When we take a look at general fund expenditures comparing two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty three, there was an increase of about eleven percent, or about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. When we take a look at the specific categories, public safety increased about seventy three thousand dollars with an increase in the sheriff's contract. Public works offset that. That decreased about fifty six thousand dollars with less supply purchases here in two thousand twenty four. Capital outlay increased about thirty four thousand, again with the donation for the baseball field sprinkler system and those related costs, and then also general government, the most significant component of general fund expenditures increased about a hundred and forty eight thousand with filling vacant positions and increases in wages and as well as insurance costs, those being the main variances here for two thousand twenty four. Going on to page eleven, this shows the allocation of general fund expenditures by function. General government continues to be the most significant component of general fund expenditures at forty one percent, followed by public safety at thirty seven percent and public works at seventeen percent, which is fairly consistent with the prior year, except for the changes in general government and public works, as noted in the, in the previous chart. Going on to page twelve, this shows the budget to actual results for two thousand twenty four. A city council adopted a budget that called for two point two million dollars in revenue, two point five million dollars in expenditures. And after transfers out and transfers in from other funds, anticipated a decrease in fund balance of about two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. Actual, actual results resulted in an increase in fund balance of about twelve thousand dollars. That was mainly driven by the revenue variance, as well as the expenditure variance. Revenues came in over budget by about ninety seven thousand dollars, and that was mainly due to that miscellaneous category coming in over budget by about a hundred and one thousand dollars. And again, conservative budgeting there for interest earnings, donations, and things. And again, the conduit debt issuance fee, and those were the items that mainly drove that variance here for two thousand twenty four. Expenditures came in a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, less than anticipated, about a six point eight percent variance there. Did have variances across all functions due to conservative budgeting for increasing costs, seasonal and part time employees. And again, that ultimately led to an increase in fund balance of about twelve thousand dollars for the year. The last chart in that document is on page thirteen, and that highlights unrestricted fund balance, which is a measure of financial health for the city and the general fund. That represented, or that amounted to one million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars at the end of the year, which is about sixty three percent of operating expenditures based on two thousand twenty four levels of about two point three million dollars in expenditures. So the, the city is in compliance with its fund balance policy. That highlights the financial analysis, as well as our, our audit results. Next, I'd just like to open it up for any questions.
So I got one question. You had talked about not being in compliance with the controls, meaning we have a limited number of people, admin people in the office. Are other cities doing something differently than us to be in, I'll call it, better compliance? Is there another option we should be looking at?
I think when it's at a material weakness level, there is opportunity for improvement there. So I think, I think having Lori Jaeger's involvement is, is definitely a help there. But continue to having additional controls, whether it be at city council level, or, you know, whether it be the consideration of hiring more individuals. Right now, there's just a lot of access to perform multiple accounting functions, and the expertise that goes along with staying up to speed with audit standards, or excuse me, accounting standards related, specific to governmental entities. Does take a fair amount of training, takes a fair amount of education that goes along with that. So continue to support that environment, and the continued training can help to improve internal control to help address that particular condition.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Swenson, go ahead.
Just follow up question that you partially answered it, maybe totally answered it, but I, I don't know how in depth you got in actually looking at like our city government and how many staff people we have, so you might not know. But is this an issue of being understaffed or misutilizing staff and not having it structured properly? Like, do you think with our current staffing level, could we structure the finance part of it to, to not be problematic, as you said?
Not, not currently, not with the current staffing model that, that's there. In, in order for, in order to have appropriate segregation of accounting duties, you'd need to have a separate individual that initiates and authorizes a transaction. Another individual that records and processes that transaction. Another individual that record, or that has custody of the related assets. And another individual that reconciles and reports that information. That would give appropriate segregation of accounting duties. And right now, there are certain individuals that are performing all four of those functions. So I think continuing to invent, you know, to, to, to see of ways to maybe limit access to perform some of those functions, additional reviews of any activity that occurs on a regular basis, to be sure that any errors are identified. Again, we're all, we're all human, so errors just, you know, inherently can occur when there's just one individual's performing multiple functions there. So it's something, you know, that additional, you know, staffing could assist with. But I think, you know, right now, there happens to be, you know, more outsourcing that can occur to bring that, that, that additional expertise that's needed there, to be sure that those controls that you do have are effective. A lot of times, it really is based on, you know, having a A lot of times, it really is based on, you know, having appropriate knowledge and experience in a certain area for those controls to be effective. So continuing to leverage those opportunities as well.
And to what degree do cities of our size typically outsource some of that to comply with sort of what you just laid out there? Is it typical of city of our size, has it all done?
And and it it really does vary, and it really is kind of based on the level of risk a particular, you know, governmental entity is is willing to take. Some are um just fine, having a material weakness on their uh report every year, and and it's not necessarily a compliance issue. It's just uh uh it's an internal control related matter to 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 know that um, you know, those controls and then the condition that exists there could pose a risk of an error in your financial statement. So it's really dependent on the level of risk um that the city chooses to uh to accept as it relates to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randall.
I'm wondering if um we could ask Natalie to respond to how um the accounting piece is handled within the city. She's made numerous changes, um and so I wonder if we could ask Natalie to respond to that.
Absolutely.
Um so Andy, we spoke with Joseph and uh the interns about this and the changes that we've made. Um by adding a staff member who's full-time, um she enters most of the invoices now. Actually, probably ninety-nine percent of them. So what happens is if public works orders something, they bring an invoice, it gets signed off by the public work supervisor. Then it goes to Lexi to be entered into the Banyan system, then it goes to me for approval. Then all the checks are cut, Mr. Mayor is contacted, he comes in, he goes through every invoice and each check, and then signs off.
So I I do have one more question, um back to Andy. Um so do you have a a one-page document or something to say, what's the best way to break down these duties and responsibilities between these four people? Cause then we can review our current system, what we're doing. I know we have checks and balances, but what he's identifying is we have some risk. So what can we do different or better? So Andy, do you have something like that?
Um, we do not. So our our role and our, the scope of the audit is to identify and understand what your current controls are and identify those deficiencies. Um, you know, identifying, you know, certain improvements and and, you know, how to best, you know, leverage those folks that you do have on hand. Um, you know, is some additional work that could be performed. And again, it really, you know, boils down to not necessarily just the functions that are being performed, but the access within the system to perform multiple accounting functions. So even though a separate individual may uh, you know, um perform those functions, e- if Natalie or anyone else like a Lori, you know, has access to perform those, even though that's not what they currently do, that still poses that risk ultimately.
Alright, so you can evaluate that, thank you. Hey, Councilmember Glazer's first. Is this your your last question, is that something we could potentially directly lead to Minnesota cities as far as a resource? Absolutely, wanna put that out there. Thank you, that's good point. Councilmember Randall.
So Mr. Mayor, um also, as as far as review, we have our claims packet, claims register in our packet. The staff leaves all of the invoices out that checks are cut for. Um and so we have the ability to go in and look, and I believe that we are all taking advantage of that. So we can go in and look at every check that is written, and it has the backup documentation that Natalie spoke about as far as being signed off, who I whoever purchased that item. And it and and so that we have that employee signature says, yes, this is a city-related expenditure. Um and so I, you know, given we do have a small staff, uh we could outsource that, and I bet you it costs us seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars to have somebody come in and do our finances. But I I think that Natalie is very careful, and um I feel that even though we could have a specific, another specific person, we don't have that, that we do a good job of monitoring the expenditures.
I would like to jump on that. If I look at the level of risk, I I look at this as a lower classification. Yes, we have some access and and functions, maybe not perfect in the ideal situation, but we do have checks and balance in place. So I I look at it as low risk, what I want to do is look at it as an opportunity to say, can we do it different and better? And it could involve a council member having access and removing act, I mean, we have options, so we can talk through that. We don't have to solve it tonight, we've identified, we've got an opportunity, um and then we'll take a look, we'll put it on our goals list. See if we can do it different, better. This has been a consistent finding year after year after year, so.
And and Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randall.
And and it is in any small city.
Okay, any other questions for Andy or for um number four? Alright, thank you, Andy, for presenting on that. Um we're gonna move on to the opioid opioid prevention presentation, and this is gonna be led by Patty uh with Anoka County.
Okay, is that better? Okay, so my name is Patty Constant, and I am the opioid prevention specialist with Anoka County. I started my role with Anoka County in October of two thousand twenty-three, so just oh almost two years ago. And my role is to address and deal with the Anoka County opioid settlement funding and to be able to take that funding and address and utilize that funding within our communities so that we are preventing opioid initiation, opioid misuse, opioid overdose, and opioid death. So it's a pretty broad spectrum, and I have this, we have opioid settlement funding over the next eighteen years. In this role, uh we have thus far established two initial priorities to address miss the misuse of opioids within our communities. The first is prevention, and to that end, we have just started uh an opioid RFP process. Our RFPs were just granted and awarded, and that that funding should be going out in the next few weeks. So we have a lot of prevention efforts now beginning. One of the the second thing that we wanted to address is naloxone, naloxone education, and that's why I'm here today. So if you wanna go to that second, thank you so much. I am not gonna belabor and read these, cause they are in the packets, I believe, correct? Good, thank you. Um but what I want to impress upon with the opioid data and statistics is there is opioid use and opioid overdose within Anoka County. What I would like to highlight from this slide is that there are approximately four Minnesotans that die every day from drug overdoses in general, not necessarily specific to opioids, but just drugs in general. But for every fatal opioid overdose, they estimate that there are at least thirteen non-fatal overdoses. So that means for every one person that you hear that dies from an opioid overdose, there are at least thirteen people who are lucky enough to survive that overdose. So that's pretty staggering. What I would also like to point out is the bottom three. In two thousand twenty-two, Anoka County had sixty-four opioid-related overdose deaths. In two thousand twenty-three, we had forty-three. In two thousand twenty-four, we had thirty-nine. So we went from being third in the state to fifth in the state, and unfortunately, our numbers aren't in yet to know where we rank in two thousand twenty-four. But we are improving, so that's good. But those thirty-nine people could be your sons, daughters, parents, neighbors, cousins, could be anybody. Opioids do not discriminate. Can go on to the next slide. This one, I talked a little bit about, I want people to understand that this opioid settlement funding is not taxpayer dollars. This is from the opioid settlement funding, so there was a large multi-state effort, and each county was allotted settlement funding. So we have this funding set to spend over the next eighteen years, so we're not quite two years into that. So we have a variety of efforts that will kind of come and go, and we will ebb and flow through, cause we can't focus on everything all at once. So as I said, our initial focus areas are prevention and naloxone education and distribution. For those of you who may be lucky enough to not know what naloxone is, naloxone is the only medication that reverses an opioid overdose. Basically, what it does is when those opioids attach onto an uh the opioid receptors, the naloxone is strong enough that that medication comes in and it knocks the opioids off. So it can save somebody's life within moments, and it is a very important medication and the only thing sometimes that can save people. So our goal is to find ways to get more naloxone into the community. Now ideally, we've got those prevention efforts, but we still need naloxone available and accessible to people. So our goal is to have naloxone and naloxone access point available within a ten-minute drive of anywhere in Anoka County. Currently, we're partnering with a group called Steve Rummler Hope Network, they are based out of St. Paul, but they do uh work throughout the state. Um and I have the website up there, so you can get more information. When you have a naloxone access point, that is intended for anyone to come in and access naloxone. So if they have a child who they're worried about what their potential substance use might be, if they've got a brother or a sister who they know that is dabbling, potentially misusing chemicals and substances, and they want to be prepared so that they can potentially save a life. If they have a parent who maybe has Alzheimer's or dementia, or who it is taking a lot of pain medication and may not be always able to monitor how much pain medication they're taking. It's beneficial for them to have easy access to naloxone, because time is of the essence in using naloxone to save a life. So these naloxone kits that are included at naloxone access points. So again, naloxone access point is a place in the community that somebody can come in, and I can say, I have an issue with my, I'm concerned about my children. I wanna come in and I want access to naloxone. This is what those kits look like, and they uh include, there's three different kinds, there's intramuscular naloxone, nasal naloxone, and they have ones that are fentanyl plus strips, cause we know right now that fentanyl is the largest issue in our community. And uh between ninety and ninety-five percent of the cases of opioid overdose involve fentanyl as well, so it's a significant issue. But these bags are sealed, um they have information and QR codes and um links to get more information. As you can see up here on the map, we recently undertook a uh project to increase the naloxone access points. So we currently now have naloxone access points, you can see where the little red nasal squirt things, hmm whatever you call those are, around the county. And again, what we're trying to do is find places within a ten-minute drive of anywhere in the county. You can see the now then Oak Grove area up there is really sparse and really blank. And what that means is if there's anybody in the county who is concerned, they've gotta go for a lot longer drive to be able to access this. Um, right now, most of those places that are on there, we got naloxone access points within all of the Anoka County libraries now. So that library situation started approximately a month ago, and if you want, you can go on to the next slide. What the library has chosen to do is use one of these purple naloxone boxes that they have within eyesight of the front desk, but so that people can come in and access the naloxone without having risk of the stigma of, oh my gosh, I'm embarrassed that I have to get this. I'm worried about my family member, but I wanna be able to save their life. So they didn't want people to have to come up to a desk and say, can I access this, or I need this, can you please help me? If someone were to buy this, it's anywhere from between twenty-five and forty dollars in stores, or if they go to a pharmacy. So it's expensive, so cost can be a factor. So at the libraries, again, they've got the purple boxes, other places have chose to set it up where they have it at a front desk or sitting on a counter, so somebody just comes in and asks. Not only do we have it at the all Anoka County libraries, we have it at the Coon Rapids Police Department and the fire station. We are working to get naloxone through some uh leave-behind programs so that if if law enforcement, first responders are going out and they know that substance use is an issue in the home, that they can simply leave this. So we're trying multiple efforts to get naloxone into the community. The one story that I want to share from the libraries, again, the library started this project just about a month ago. And there was a mom who was, she says, one of the first patrons in the library, because she was very concerned about her teenage daughter not making great choices, and she knew that her daughter had been using some opioids. And we received information approximately two weeks after she got that. She had ran into somebody who worked, she knew that worked at the libraries at one of the PTO meetings. And she said, I needed to thank you for having naloxone at the libraries, because over the weekend, my daughter overdosed. And I had that naloxone kit at home. And based on where she lives and her proximity or lack thereof to emergency facilities, she goes, I don't know that my daughter would have been saved if I wouldn't have had that naloxone kit. And I don't know if she didn't think, or if what her financial situation was, that she didn't wanna go spend forty bucks to go get one. But it was because of the naloxone that was available at the libraries. So to only have it in the libraries for one month and have that success story, and to have that one child's life, I know that if that was my child, I would feel like that was a very worthwhile endeavor. So my ask of you today is to consider having a naloxone access point within now then. Natalie and I have explored um as well as with the mayor, a few different options, and I believe they're looking at potentially at the city hall and exploring some options. There's a few things I would want you to know about that. It is free, the city, there would be no cost to you. All that it would require is simply one person to maintain that. That would basically say, we need more naloxone, this is how many we've gone through, and do that simple reporting, which would probably take looking at the amounts, you know, probably not even five minutes within a week. So not a huge ask. The other two things that I really wanna point out is if someone were to use naloxone on somebody that was not having an overdose, there is no harm, it is not a risky medication, it is not something that causes harm. If, you know, a kid were to get a hold of this and to be playing with it, it is uh, it is a very safe medication to use. And the last thing is that so far, the libraries have experienced no issues. And in every study of places around, um even with Steve Rummler, where they currently have access points, it does not, some places have said, does it increase bad traffic, does it increase, you know, negative people? Most of the time, the people who are coming in and accessing those naloxone access points are people who are concerned about their friends and family members and who want to be available to help, to make a difference. I personally always carry one in my car, I have my kids carry them in their car, because they'll be going out to parties and they do different things that they're, you know, they probably shouldn't be doing. But I want them to be prepared, so that if anything negative were to happen to one of their friends, that they have the capacity to respond. Um I think that is, yeah, that's the last slide. So there is my information. There's a lot of efforts going forward to uh address the opioid situation in the county. We're headed in the right direction, but right now, our big ask is just how can we really make sure that we're getting naloxone into the hands of the people who really may need it to make a difference. And I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point, or how you want me to proceed, I just know I was asked to kind of present why it might be helpful.
Yeah, I kind of, how how do we uh restock the packets? Let's say we have ten of them, we go through them, how do we get them?
So that's through the partnership with Steve Rummler, so I helped set you up. So if you were the main contact point, you basically end up getting an access through a, through an online portal, and you just say, we need this many more. And they'll ask occasionally, like, how many have you given out? And then, so it's a pretty simple process, they mail them out to you.
Mail them out, mm-hmm, thank you.
And if you were to choose as an access to have one of the boxes, we would supply that. If you choose to just have it in a cardboard display on a counter, we would supply that if you chose to have it behind the desk. And then we would add your site or location to the map, and that's how people would know to be able to come in there.
Uh yeah, thank you. Uh I was just curious, um do you know, are most of these packs taken by family members or concerned people, or or even users, like as a preventative thing, just to have on hand, or?
Yes.
Are there a lot of people in like acute overdose, or their friends running to grab this?
There are, if somebody was in an overdose situation, they would not be able to use it on themselves. So people who are going to actively be using, what has been recommended, and most of them know, is that they are recommended that they never use alone. So what seems to be happening more and more is if there's a group of people who are getting together to use, they will have one person who does not engage in that activity, and they will have the access to the, to the naloxone medication to save a life. And that seems to be helping a lot. Again, we don't want our friends and family using. Nobody would say we do, but we also wanna try and save any of those lives and make a difference where we can.
Councilmember Glazer. Are these uh packets, are they, do they have date sensitivity or temperature sensitivity?
Great question. They do approximately have three to four-year expiration dates. What we also know is that in an ideal situation and in an ideal world, they are in a temperature-controlled setting. What the studies have shown is that even naloxone that has been through freeze thaw, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, heat, you know, all of those things, it still has an over ninety-eight percent efficacy. So even if it, and the Steve Rummler Hope Network does a really great job of saying, if you've got some that are expiring, send them back, we'll replace them. So they're really good at staying on top of that as well. But then even again, I tell people, they're, they will, I wouldn't wanna keep it in my car, because it's exposed. But it's gonna do better being in your car, if you were to drive into a quick trip and there's a If you were to drive into a quick trip and there's a slumper in the car. It's going to be better to have to like warm it up, you know, under your armpits or to, to at least try and buy you a little bit of time. While that emergency responders are getting there. So, yes and no.
Slumber, that must be a.
So a lot of times people will use in their car and then.
A slump over.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, ma'am.
Absolutely, thank you.
We're gonna move on to uh item number six, Rummer Consultants. Talking about septic compliance trap.
Did you marry?
Can you guys grab the microphone and pull it out from the side there?
Is that better?
Yes, that'd be better so we can hear you.
There you go, thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm Andy Schrader with Rummer Consultants and this is Kerry McGivney, uh works with us as well and appreciate the opportunity. Want to talk a little bit about septic systems, onsite septic systems and what the responsibilities, the differences are between. The Pollution Control Agency and then also what's governed here locally. So I have vision maybe thirty minutes or so of your time and I know uh there's a lot going on this evening. But this is something we wanted to bring in front of you so that we can make informed decisions going forward, as far as what the options are that you want to take care of here locally. So as far as the division of duty, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is the governing body from the state of Minnesota that puts out the septic rules. There's also another number of other agencies we deal with, Department of Labor and Industry, Building Code, as well as Department of Health. And in this case, it's the Department of uh, excuse me, the uh Pollution Control Agency. So who has septic systems? All of us too, in bedroom communities such as this where there's not a centralized wastewater treatment facility. Uh, all of our residents and businesses, for that matter, have what's called an onsite or a private wastewater treatment system. Now, a lot of people that moved to our areas, uh bedroom communities, uh we serve a number of areas with onsite systems. And it's really not uncommon for people to not realize that they have a septic system when they move from Ramsey or Andover or other cities like that. So it's not uncommon for us to have to educate people from the very beginning, that yes, they have one, what is it, where is it and how they react to it. And um I just also wanted to point out the importance of this. Because as much as we understand and appreciate private property rights and so on, that's true. However, our groundwater, our aquifers need to be uh adequately protected. Because it's not only your property that you're going to be affecting your own well, it's the neighbors, the neighbors' neighbors and so on, on down the line. So it's very critical that we get on top of this and we stay on top of it. So the purpose and the intent, um now, we're going to stay at about five thousand feet. We don't want to get down to the ground level, but we also don't want to be too aloof, we want to make sure that we're adequately addressing this. So it's about at a five thousand foot elevation. Trust us, we could spend hours and hours on this and um our septic inspectors, we have uh four licensed septic inspectors. They spend several days each year maintaining those licenses, there's also licenses for us for as a company. Now, we don't expect anybody to be experts, but we do want to provide at least a level of understanding of not only uh who provides those rules, but also terminology. And again, what those local requirements are. So as far as what's local and then what is is uh local and then versus uh state. And Carrie's going to be speaking as well on this slide, so we're kind of tag team back and forth. So by rule, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is the uh agency or the entity that uh publishes those rules. They trickle down to the county and then from the county down to the cities and then the townships as well. We're gonna take a little bit of a deeper, deeper dive into these next two slides. Um, but I do want to uh also say this is that septic rules are, and fire code rules are different than the building code. Minnesota State, uh, excuse me, Department of Labor and Industry issuing the department or the uh building code, that's what's called a statewide standard. We don't have the ability to deviate from that, we cannot make those rules more strict or less strict for handrails, starrails and stairs and things of that nature. We don't have the ability to deviate from that. However, Minnesota State Fire Code and Pollution Control Agency allows local jurisdictions to enforce rules that are more strict. You can never be less strict than you can be more strict than the state uh standards as they're published. Some terminology in the state responsibilities here as well, um the laws again are established by the MPCA, that gives us the design standards. Um, so there's several layers of licenses and one of which, the first of which is by the designer. So the Pollution Control Agency issues these laws and that is the first as far as who's allowed and who's licensed to actually do the design. There's also licenses required for installation and then also those for inspection. And I think this might come up later, but I wanted to mention it now, just because it does come up a couple of times every year. That a homeowner or in some cases a business owner wants to install their own septic system. Now, that is allowed, that's an exemption from the licensing criteria. So technically, a homeowner does have the ability to install their own septic system. However, that has to be done under a licensed design. So a homeowner cannot design their own system, but under the right parameters, they can actually install their own. And I would say that happens every couple of years, where we have a homeowner that might have the equipment, might have the background. And to do that, it's really somewhat subjective, but we do provide even a little bit more oversight on that. Because we want to make sure that the systems are preserved not only for this homeowner, but for the next ones as well. Uh, the other job from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is that they register products. You know, so the septic tanks themselves are tested annually, annually, as well as any distribution media, there's proprietary products out there. Uh, for uh dis- uh, for drain fields and things of that nature, that's another job of the MPCA. To test and also license those different uh products. So Minnesota State rules, it's seventy eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two and eighty-three. Seventy eighty is, are the design standards, again, the required separation. So your septic system has to be at least three feet above what's called model soil or groundwater. Just to make sure that the the uh effluent coming out of your septic system has enough vertical distance to be adequately treated. By the naturally appearing bacteria in the soil before it hits groundwater. Because that's going to take a highway over to your, to your well and your drinking water, surface waters and things like that. Seventy eighty-one covers the mid-side septic systems from five to ten thousand gallons. Seventy eighty-two uh are the parameters for local systems, those are the rules that we need to follow as far as cities and townships. And then seventy eighty-three is the licensing and certification program for all of those different professions. And again, I just bring those up so that you can realize when Minnesota rules seventy through eighty, seventy eighty-three, it encompasses all of those different chapters. Um additionally, um we've been experiencing audits now from MPCA. And it's not near as painful as you might think to have an audit from the Pollution Control Agency, I've been through two of these already. And they're actually, I found them to be very helpful, what happens is somebody from the MPCA will come in and audit our program. Look at our applications for permits, look at our actual uh plan reviews, our inspection programs and our documentation. And so far, we've had very good results, and again, that happens uh every couple of years. So as our footprint increases, I think that's going to increase as well. I went through one here and now then several years ago, we did another one, I think it was through Oak Grove. So that's something that you might see in the future, as far as MPCA at least be knowledgeable of the fact. That they do tap us on the shoulder every once in a while to make sure that we're adhering to the rules that they taught us. So the state requirements, again, uh what I wanted to talk about here is um the management plan. So every septic system that is designed and installed, whether it be a brand new system or a replacement system, needs to come what's called a management plan. The management plan is basically a document that tells you how to care for your system. When does it need to be assessed, we're going to talk about that in detail in just a few minutes, um and how to take care of it. Uh, making sure that you don't, of course, a building assessment building too close, that you don't drive on it, you don't park on it, things of that nature. So that's a key word to remember is the management plan. I've been doing this for twenty some years now already, and I can see over the last five to seven years. That there's been an increased attention given to that management plan. That requirement's been in the rules seventy eighty for a number of years. However, it's just now that we're getting better at getting the designers to put that management plan out there. Uh, so that's, that shows that we're moving in the right direction, that educational piece is is really helping. Um, I I wrote this in your choice to kind of uh, to be a little bit silly, but nothing that, nothing should go in your septic system that doesn't come out of you. So when it comes to garbage disposals, flushable wipes, dental floss and things of that nature. That's where that management plan, we want to talk again about that management piece and the maintenance piece coming up, is just how important it is to care for that system. Because the drain field is the expensive part, the the septic tank itself is also very expensive. But when you start getting solids and materials uh that don't degrade out into your drain field and it clogs that distribution media. That's where the the expense comes in and also the hazard for surfacing sewage and effluent. Because that's where the the people get sick and that's where the harm really comes from. This is a really good visual. I want to, I even want to go a little point. This is a really good visual to talk about uh how the water gets out of the system. See, look at that, so coming out of the house, you have your septic tank. And I want to talk about that just for a minute because we had another issue with this today as far as the location. Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the rules say that septic tank has to be at least ten feet away from any structure. Now, the defines a structure is whatever is built, so that pertains in our uh estimation, a deck, an accessory building, it doesn't matter. A setback is a setback to a structure, so that septic tank needs to be ten feet away from even a deck. And the reason I brought that up today is we had a situation in another jurisdiction where the builder, when they built the house, the septic tank is ten feet away from the house. Well, what was right at that, at that house was a deck ledge and patio. Uh patio door and a deck ledge, well, that didn't afford any size of a deck. So we want to make sure that we're diligent, we work with city national courts, but we look at the septic plant, or when we look at these plans. To make sure that everybody knows what's bound to happen. Because even though it's technically legal today, that tank is ten feet away, it doesn't serve that homeowner very well when they come back to us for a deck permit. Uh, uh sometime later and then we have, have to tell them that, so we just want to make sure that we're planning ahead. So after that septic tank, you come out, now this is a gravity system where the uh, so when it comes from the house to the tank, it's called sewage. From there, it's called effluent, just another terminology to remember. And as that water, that effluent comes out, it goes out into this distribution media and it goes through the soil. And again, it needs to have at least three feet of separation from groundwater or a limiting condition. Because that's where it's going to give a highway to the groundwater here. And once it hits that groundwater, it's going to your well, the neighbor's well, surface waters and things like that. Any questions so far? Right, thank you. Um, I also packed up one slide, uh I also want to bring, this is an opportunity, there's two ways a septic system can fail. It's called a lack of separation or an imminent health threat, which is surfacing raw sewage. A lack of separation just simply means that your drain field is too low. Now, that's an issue that we need to address uh through the ordinances as far as how much time you have to replace that system. But it's not near as bad as what's called an imminent health threat. An imminent health threat is either exposed electrical or surfacing raw sewage. So if that septic tank were plugged or filled up and the sewage went back into the house. Or it literally surfaces on the ground, that's called an imminent health threat. One of the things that the local jurisdiction has is the authority to determine how long that system has to be replaced. That doesn't mean you can have surfacing sewage for that long, it also says in Minnesota rules that we have to immediately abate that. We had one in Oak Grove not that long ago where we had to do just that, circle and encircle the entire area in snow fence. And sprinkle uh lime on the surface to neutralize the the raw sewage and make sure that people didn't go through that area. So that's really important to realize is that not only do you have two timeframes uh to replace or repair that system, but the uh. Imminent health threat needs to be abated immediately, so that's like a nine one one, we want to make sure that we contact the homeowners. And then we stand by to make sure that there's no people coming in contact with the raw sewage. Want to talk a little about the definitions here, Carrie?
Yeah, absolutely, so um as Andy had talked about, not only are there the state requirements. But there's also um a local responsibility um as it pertains to uh septic systems. Uh, we have ordinances, that's the adoption of your local requirements specific to um your jurisdiction and aligns with best practices. And again, allows that local control, and we did um pass out. Section three of the um Now Then City Code, that is your local um ordinances that have been approved. By the city of Now Then. And um there's also the permits, so administration of permits, um. It needs to be done by performing um a thorough plan review and site inspections of all new and uh replacement septic systems. So again, if a new home comes in, um our staff reviews those plans. Um, for the system and along with the site plan to ensure that those setbacks that Andy had talked about. Um, meet your local requirements. Uh, we also have maintenance and that is to ensure property owners maintain their systems. And uh we'll talk a little bit more about that, along with compliance. Uh, that typically when properties are sold, um they have to have that point of sale inspection that determines whether or not the system is compliant or non-compliant. And then the last component that's up there is um regarding reporting. Every year um MPCA requires an annual report be filed with them every February. You know, it's also really important to note that there is flexibility within the state laws that allow for a local jurisdiction. As we talked about, to be more restrictive than the state requirements and an example would be um setbacks. Um, along with several others, but.
Let's touch base or back up a little bit to that reporting piece, so what the state is really looking for is the number of systems that are installed. The types of systems that they have, what, what are the results of the compliance inspection? So there's a lot of local uh governance as far as when compliance inspections are performed. Um, the state says you must do that when you add a bedroom. Uh, when you do certain instances like adding a bedroom, that's a a certificate of compliance is required at that point. Also, when you build a new system, um here we have decided uh that the compliance inspections are also required at a point of sale. When you sell a property, so that's one piece out of others that you could look at as as a local discretionary piece. Uh, I just wanted to point that out as well.
Yeah, so so for each of these bullet points, we are going to walk through a brief summary. Um, and staff had, would invited us here tonight to present this to you all. Um, also asked us to review, you know, current practices, identify where improvements could be made. Um, in order to adhere to state laws and best practices.
So this is where we really wanted to double click on this as far as what are the tape assessment? Um, industry has called these pumping permits correct, uh it's always been called pumping permits. If locally you decided that you wanted to help people understand their systems, the management piece, you would issue what's called a pumping permit. Well, several years ago, the state wanted to get away from that a little bit. Because as we are realizing that when people take care of their systems, you don't necessarily need to physically pump it every three years. So pumping is akin to cleaning, so your septic tank, according to the rules, needs to be assessed or cleaned every three years. So by default, a lot of people have been simply pumping their tank. And I'm not wanting, I don't want to get real graphic here, but when you have your septic tank, the idea is to clean it. So you do that one of two ways, you either draw all the liquid out and then pump it right back in. Because the sludge at the bottom and the scum on the top would then get agitated and then suspended in the liquid. And then you draw it back out, therefore you have cleaned the tank. Another way to go about that is you take, don't look at me like that, you, you take a great big old egg beater, it's almost like an ice fogger. Uh, and you take that, you put it into the tank and it turns really fast and you agitate the contents of the tank. Therefore, the sludge at the bottom and the scum at the top gets suspended within the liquid and then you pull that out. The reason why we do that is to make sure that the scum and the sludge don't work their way out into the drain. Because again, that's the expensive part and when that breaks, then we're all, all of our phones are rigged. So I just wanted to talk about that and I know that's a little graphic, but that's what the 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 tape pumping is. So now we've realized that MPCA has realized that not everybody needs to physically empty their tank every three years. Um, a lot of times you can do what's called an assess. That means that a licensed professional comes out, they measure the scum on the top, they measure the sludge on the bottom. And if it's, thank you for this slide, this is a great one. So if you turn your attention with the picture here, that's the scum on the top, that's the sludge on the bottom. Heavier stuff called sludge sinks down to the bottom, what we want to make sure is that sludge doesn't get so high that this is called a baffle. That it doesn't go so high that it moves into the next tank or out into the drain field. Much like the scum, we don't want that too close to the top because that's going to flow over and out into the drain field. So you could go out conceivably, if you're taking care of your septic system, you don't have a garbage disposal, you're not flushing wipes and things of that nature. Your system can last longer than three years before you need to pump it and empty it. Uh, there's a lot of people and there's actually people I know right in here that had a a five bedroom home. And the kids are left, so now it's mom and dad that are left, you have two people in a five bedroom home. So if you have two people taking care of that septic system and you uh measure the scum and sludge, you can take care of it. You don't necessarily need to pay a big pump truck to come empty that tank every three years. It's all based on education, making sure that the uh, the maintainer is the professional there. That they have a good relationship with the homeowner, so they can tell them, make sure you don't flush the dental floss. Hey, what's that garbage disposal, get that out of there, because that has a large, large detrimental effect on the septic system. So that's what really uh the big subject for tonight is the maintenance in the, in the pumping permits or the maintenance permits. That are discretionary that we are advocating. Fair enough?
Yep. And we covered the tips for tank assessments just now as well. And we did provide um copies of our presentation to city council and now I can get email through if there's anyone else interested as well. Go over some pump tapes?
Yes, so the pump tape is, um, so there's two uh tanks that you would have is a, uh, in this scenario. Yes, so the pump tank is um so there's two uh tanks that you would have is a uh in this scenario is a septic tanks, that's where the raw sewage goes out to. And then with the pump tank, if you have a system where your effluent is getting pumped uphill or to a mound or something like that, a secondary tank is called your pump tank. Now, again, the the scum and the sludge, you want to maintain that in the septic tank. Because if that goes over to your pump tank here, you can see on the bottom, there's where your pump is. There's a couple of of uh pucks or bases there to get that pump off off the floor. So if there is any uh sludge that goes in, it doesn't damage the impellers of the pump and therefore cause maintenance issues there. So this simply shows the septic tank and then the pump tank, when you get your septic system assessed or pump, it's critical that the maintainer looks at both of those uh both of those tanks. It's called clear liquid, but it's not really clear. It's basically devoid of scum and sludge. Another piece I want to point on, just more terminology. So when did any of it clean? Um right now, it's every three years. That's what Minnesota Pollution Control Agency tells us that every three years you're supposed to have your system cleaned or assessed. Now, when you have a maintainer, um they're going to be probably hesitant to do that too late in the year. Unless you're a big family and you use a lot of water, you don't want to pump that tank out too late in the year for uh fear of any freezing potential with that. Uh and then also on the slide, I did want to point out the fact that the inspection ports that you see coming up, those are not to be used as pump tank. You need to get down to the manhole, get to the cover itself. So if you uh if you're working with the maintainer and they come out and say, boy, your system is actually buried, your tank is two or three feet down. They need to get out and actually dig up those uh manholes and then install a riser. So those little cords, you can't just stick your your tube down in there to suck out the the contents. You need to access the manhole so you can um have a better view of it. So you can actually make make sure that you're actually cleaning that tank. So as far as the ordinance, do you want to touch touch on this one or should I?
Yeah, I love. I can. Um so the this goes back to that first bullet point um of the few here regarding the local responsibility. And um I'm not going to go through every single one of those bullet points, but basically um seventy eighty-two highlights these items that the city must do. So again, we talked about it being at least at at least as restrictive, it can be more. Um you've got to require that um it's all of the items listed there are performed by appropriately certified um professionals. And um again, if there are noncompliant systems, that point of sale that I talked about um that come back, it's the city's responsibility to require the remediation of those noncompliant systems. Um again, prohibiting surface discharge of the of the sewage and there's an abatement process for that. And um again, all changes to local ordinances do have to be reviewed and approved by the MPCA. And one of the things um when staff had asked us to look into this is we just did a brief um cursory review of the ordinance and we did find they're finding that there are um some inconsistencies. And I'm not sure Natalie, do you know offhand when, how long ago this was written or how, when the last time it was reviewed?
Okay, I think there's some conflicting language in nine and ten. Right? It 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 talks about how much time you have to replace a failing system. And then a little further down, it says that you can maintain or you can still maintain and operate a failing system. So we need to look at that language because that's conflicting. I also want to talk.
I was just going to say, one of the services that we would provide would be to author um that ordinance based off of the model um that we have and then um provide that to staff for their review and then ultimately city council for yours to get that updated and and up to what is current best practices. And that is part of our contract already and it's charged at an hourly rate.
So there's two things on here I want to talk about too is is when does a holding tank allow? Uh a holding tank is something that you need a uh an alarm on it so that you know when that system is pulled and it needs to be actively pumped out. There are some jurisdictions that don't want holding tanks and some that do. Uh we work in the city of Baldwin up by Princeton and they really find a need for uh tanks around the lakes. Uh a little old lake in particular, because the lots of Sodag on small, there's really no place to put another system. And if you did put a system in that small footprint, it's going to have a lot of technologies and this can be really expensive. So some of those seasonal um um residences like that, they have an ordinance that allows a holding tank. So that's one thing that is discretionary here, that you can decide when holding tanks are appropriate and when they're not necessarily allowed. And then the next piece on that is um is an operating permit. So that's something I don't know if you're familiar with that, but an operating permit is required under seventy-eight. Pollution Control Agency said, operating permits are to be administered locally. Uh currently in Nowland, we're not. Um for example, and this is the best way I can think of to explain is when it has a lot of bells and whistles, when it has pre-treatment. Like, for example, a church with a commercial kitchen or you have a gas station or something like that. You have a lot of technologies or bells and whistles into that system. And that's when an operating permit is supposed to be administered. Currently, right now, we're not doing. Um that's something that we can get on top of. So when the next assessment comes along, we can tell the Pollution Control Agency that we're on top of our game and we're administering those operating permits. Now, an operating permit, you might decide would put that in conjunction with a holding tank as well. What that would do is make sure that the homeowner who has a a holding tank has a relationship with a maintainer and that they assess it or that they pump it on a regular basis rather. And with that holding tank, again, it needs to have that alarm on there so it doesn't bubble up and then uh overflow into the lake or into the ditch or something like that.
Another component, um and this is a service that we actually currently provide um as the city of Nowland designated building official is your permit program. And that is um local units of government, we must have a program for all new and replacement um systems. Um most installations have the um many inspections that are performed, which uh soil verification, which confirms an accurate measurement to the soil limiting layer. Um and uh tanks verifies that they're properly installed according to the design. There's a scarification um inspection, which ensures the soil above ground, soil of the above-ground treatment systems are adequately roughed in prior to uh rock bed installation. The actual rock bed, rock bed inspection, which verifies the drain field rock bed is constructed according to the design. Uh final inspection, which ensures the grade is properly restored with vegetation established and also checks that the system is in compliance and a functional state. And then there's also um Asbilt, which reviews that final documentation submitted by the installer for accuracy and completeness.
We're doing a little bit of a different approach with that Asbilt these days, um because at the beginning of it, we have all the information. So we're actually producing the drawing. I don't know if anybody's ever seen an Asbilt as it was uh drawn on by an installer. Um installers are notorious good operators. They can reach out with a baton and comb your hair. But sometimes their pictures leave a little bit to be desired. So we're actually generating the Asbils ahead of time for installers. And then we're simply leaving the blanks for them to fill in. So I think you're going to find a a a great amount of satisfaction from the installers that they don't have to do all of the paperwork themselves. We're basically giving them a cross-section of the elevations. We're asking them to shoot those elevations and fill in the numbers. Uh I think that's going to be really well received. So just look forward to that. Uh no, the certificate or excuse me, the certificate of compliance, um whether this is interesting or not, it's the certificate of compliance as it's done at property transfer and things of that nature, um that's on a standard form. Um however, the Pollution Control Agency doesn't give us a standard form for new and replacement system. So it's up to every jurisdiction to basically make their own. That's a free form comment. And um I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if Cindy, if that's really applicable to too many people. Uh but the certificate of compliance, you guys are going to see a different format. The state provides in in a a form that everybody needs to use, but when it comes to new and replacement systems, it's up to us what that form actually looks like. So we've developed our own. And again, here we talked about the the two types of systems or the two types of ways a system can fail. Uh again, which is a lack of separation, meaning the drain field is too low. And then an imminent health, which means there's raw sewage that we could come in contact with people.
And I can go through kind of what um our our program that we provide and what we're doing for other jurisdictions um as it relates to the compliance program is when a jurisdiction receives a report identifying um a noncompliant system, a formal letter um would need to be sent to the property owner. That letter outlines a requirement to repair or replace a system within a specified timeframe. Typically, there are several months um from the date of the report. And again, if there is um an imminent health threat, abatement would need to be done immediately. Um and it's it's essential that these noncompliance um systems are actively tracked and followed up on. So our co-compliance division within the community development department of Run River Consultants handles those um the our compliance program. And um ongoing monitoring ensures that compliance um is within that timeframe that is set um by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency along with local ordinances. And it also um the process helps safeguard the both the community health and environmental quality quality. And we are able to provide training and support to staff to take over or to to perform this responsibility. Um otherwise, alternatively, we can continue or we can manage the um compliance reports directly. And that does uh maintain accuracy, consistency and alignment with regulatory compliance. We would um perform that at our hourly service in our current contract.
Just to point out the length of times that you have allotted to replace failing systems. It's six months for imminent health, which is pretty much in line with other jurisdictions around here. And then twenty-four months for lack of separation. That's also well in line with other jurisdictions. So again, if it's an imminent health threat, we got to get out there and secure the area to make sure nobody gets hurt. But as far as the length of time to replace that system, what you have in the ordinance now is pretty much in line with other jurisdictions that I've seen uh around the area.
I talked earlier about that annual reporting. Again, state law requires that every local unit of government um that have a subject to an SSTS program submits that annual report. It says every January, it should be February. Um and it must include the number of compliant and noncompliant systems, the number of in systems that are installed and of each type, what tanks are being installed, including the number of manufacturer and the number of systems serving non-residential buildings and seasonal dwellings. Um this annual reporting, again, you know, uh we have um technology that we uh are able to use to track and um provide that in reporting. And again, um could that's a service that um staff would like Run River, staff in the council would like Run River Consultants to do. We would be happy to do that again at an hourly rate that's identified in our contract.
It's interesting to note that on the annual spec or the annual report rather, that the uh number of tanks installed and my who. Um and the reason for that is the Pollution Control Ag- Agency actually sends a bill or an invoice to the installers on the number of tanks that they install. Um they have seen it in their wisdom to let that fall to the local unit of government, us, to count those tanks and to to report that back. So the uh MPCA will actually send an invoice, if you will, to Ed's septic installation based on the numbers that are provided by each jurisdiction. So it's critical that those numbers are correct because of course there's money involved that the installers need to pay to the state. And what that money is there for is to test the tanks. So that's a pool of money that's used to go out to playsteds and Ninth River, whoever actually makes the septic tanks to test them for water plants. Sure. So that maintenance program and um that's where it comes back to that management plan. Every septic system designed and installed has to have that management plan. And that's where we wanted to really uh uh pause for a minute on the operating permits and also the um pumping permits or the maintenance permits. So jurisdictions around here do issue those permits for tracking that maintenance activity. So what would happen is at the outset of a program like this, we would take a good inventory of what systems are out there and where those, when those systems have last been maintained or pumped. And it's really traditional that a lot of jurisdictions would send out a postcard and and in order to inform the homeowner that their system is due to be maintained or to be pumped. And that's done on an annual or on a a postcard again, that's maintained in a database. And those permits are basically uh issued anywhere from ten to twenty dollars apiece and that's going to be done on a three-year seller. Those operating permits are a separate animal. I'd like to do uh work at that a little bit more closely to identify which performance systems are in the city, which ones need and I have that operating permit. That's going to be a little bit of a deeper dive to make sure that those are done in a compliant manner. Any questions on hold?
Commissioner.
Councilman Glazer, go ahead.
So are you currently providing the service for other municipalities, other cities that of similar size uh relative to the number of systems that are currently out there? What is the cost of that service annually to this, to the city or the residents? Who pays for it?
Well, the maintainer, the service provider, the maintainer would be the one experiencing that permit and it's generally around twenty dollars. That's every three years.
And so just like, so I I set it up on my phone. Every uh I I reach out to to our maintainer every three years in March, when are you going to start pumping things? So by him pulling that permit and turning it in, the city were in compliance.
Correct.
And that's all there is to it.
And if you happen to what you sell or you you miss, you miss that reminder, then the city uh through a program like this would get that reminder too.
So maybe this question for Natalie, do we have septic maintainers currently turning uh requesting permits and turning into our city right now?
We take those in, we use process them, find all the main port holders. Um when people are selling their homes, we get multiple calls saying they have all the septic records. Sometimes you have them and sometimes they haven't been done in a long time. Um we have currently, I know of three or four that have failed. One is well outside our two-year window. Um this is one of the reasons I asked, as one of the residents had uh mentioned subcontracting some of the stuff that we're not experts in, that we can't, you know, we could probably do it with training and more staff, but at this point, we haven't, we haven't been doing it. Um these are getting away with the educations that I have or anything, but uh we have not been doing that we are supposed to be doing um and needing safe guidelines and we reported. So they were kind enough and they did just report for us this year based upon what they had and what we had from NINSPEC for January. I'm not sure exactly how much time that took, but again, I do know that I do have some systems that are out of compliance, have been out of compliance and have not done anything to move that forward.
I'd like to go. Go ahead, I may just um kind of dovetail on on Natalie's. As far as the time goes, um the all of these different programs that I've highlighted from the ordinance all the way down to the last one with maintenance and everything in between, they're all intertwined. And with the program that we have and run up of that annual report that's provided to the MPCA, again, will be accurate, as accurate as possible. And it's done off of a computer system and and software. I don't know if you, you, we didn't talk about.
We didn't talk about baseline at all yet, no.
Um but yes, and so once we, or if we have the program um and administer your SSTS program, then again, that would, things would go a lot quicker because we maintain the data as well.
So going back to Councilor Glazer's question is the cost to implement. So if you were to come in here, um let's just say at the first of January, what would be the overall cost to the city for you guys to to bring us up to par following the state law um over the course of one year?
Well, the the operating permits would be a permit through baseline and we've uh uh our uh contract identifies a percentage of that. So there would be no cost to the city for that. The maintenance permits would be uh twenty dollars every three years. So there's no cost to the city for that. And directly that goes through the maintainer and the property owner itself. The actual reporting, the annual reporting for the MPCA, um I'm guessing ten to twelve hours annually to make sure that the uh reports are generated to MPCA.
So overall, very low cost back to the city.
Correct. Yeah, updating the ordinance.
That's true.
You know, again, that you know, that that's the lane that I'll swim that I swim in and probably ten to twenty hours at most.
And that would be a one-time deal to go through the ordinance.
Yeah, that's it.
Commissioner.
And we'll just keep an eye on that and we follow the legislation. So when they come through, once it's updated, then we stay on top of that for you and then we would just pass along any updates. And then staff would be able to do it, but getting it up to where it needs to be would take a long time.
Take some time. Councilmember Glazer, go ahead.
So per reference, what is the hourly rate that that's with that? Like, that's ten, twelve hours for?
I don't, our contract.
It's under a hundred dollars an hour.
It's yeah, it's under a hundred, but I don't know.
Ninety or ninety-five dollars per hour.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Councilor.
The onboard would possibly be half way they select. Um and we, you've heard, we have all the problems, the biosecurity has been maintained in most of them and they've been all around the topic that she could enter where we are in the last couple of years for one that we have had. So that baseline, you know, what was done in twenty-two, what was done in twenty-three and what's been done in twenty-four. And then after that would be up to Run River because they'll be getting a permit directly through baseline and we won't be touching.
And that's self-sustainable, that that component of your SSTS program is self-sustainable because it's off.
Right, great. Thank you for bringing that up. So that part would be a joint effort.
So next step for us is updating ordinance is what it sounds like.
Correct.
And do we have that currently on uh on the agenda plan for future months at this point?
Uh it's possible, pretty sure it will be. I have not put around that we had a talk about it.
Thank you for the time and seeing you. This is really what we wanted to do. Thank you for the time to see me. This is really what we wanted to do, get in front of you and pass all this information. Make you a little bit more familiar with the terminology and things of that nature and always remember if you ever have a question, because we live this summer.
Well, yes.
Thank you for doing that every day.
Yeah.
So any other questions um for Run River Consultants?
If I wasn't too bad. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan, I do want to make a, just to make a comment in general that just this is a friendly reminder to everybody that if you didn't know. And if you don't know when the last time you bumped your septic tank, you might want to take advantage of that opportunity this summer. Um we have had a postcard program in the past and then it has, I you know, I don't, that was a long time ago, but I don't know. Where all that was in the process and then that did did stop for whatever reason, so. We have had it, but yeah, I mean, it hasn't been been uh updated or done recently, so.
I must say, sounds like an opportunity. Sounds like we can do better. All right, thank you, guys.
You know any things off?
No.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move to our next uh agenda item, which is Anoka County Highway Department to discuss Bow Street project.
Let's go over here, members of the council. Thanks for, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Nick Dabda. I'm a design engineer and manager at Anoka County. And with me tonight is uh senior technician for Anoka County, name is Jeff Foster, and he is managing the project, so. As you know, we are uh proposing a reconstruction of Bow Street. Between one hundred first and Viking Boulevard next year. And we had a open house, uh I think September last year, and the last time we were at the council was probably in September of last year. So there's been a number of. Uh new members to the council here, so we thought it'd be an appropriate time. Come here tonight and give you an update on the status of this project. Again, tonight we're not. Asking for any decisions, we're just giving you an update, so we anticipate a. A quick discussion here and we'll get into the G P O discussion and let's join powers of moment, so. We're gonna throw some preliminary numbers out there, just to have a discussion on it and answer any questions that you may have. And with that, um if you have any questions that come up during our presentation, just interrupt us and we'll answer them as they come up, so with that, I'm gonna. Introduce Jeff and he's gonna give you a background on the schedule and any. Relevant design updates. Thank you.
Council. Uh just a quick update to our geometrics that uh has transpired since our last meeting is September eleventh of twenty twenty four. Um originally, we presented this roadway with a preliminary uh assessment that we were going to. Uh do a concrete reconstruction project. From County Road sixty four up to County Road sixty five, which is better known as Bow Street. Uh was identified as uh needing shoulders. It's a safety project. We're looking at adding shoulders and adding turn lanes. Uh through the preliminary process, we went through and evaluated all the intersections, the city street to county road intersections and. Uh assessed where. The uh appropriate. Guideline spacing for each intersection should be. Um it was identified that three intersections uh. Would meet those requirements for full intersections. And at those intersections, we would also add left turn lanes. So the whole point of the project was safety. Adding the shoulders, it's got very steep shoulders on it today. We knew if we constructed any more up. We were going to have to go out anyway because the slopes are getting too steep. Um about five years ago, we we put a Band-Aid on this road uh to hopefully hold it through until we had some. Funding in place and actually had a design in mind. Uh we know that. It won't take too much longer and that those clay soils are gonna start to work their way back through that black patch that we put on top of it. That you see today. Uh currently, there are no uh shoulders on that roadway at all, so pedestrian traffic is very dangerous. Um and turning traffic has no way to get out of the throughput of the roadway at many of the intersections. There's a couple that have existing uh right turn lanes today that were put in with uh developments, but other than that, they don't. So we are planning on adding those full paved shoulders and uh. Right turn lanes at all city to county intersections as well as left turn lanes at three intersections. Yeah, originally, it was supposed to be concrete. We looked at that, evaluated that. We had a lot of feedback at our uh the first open house. Where uh. Citizens were concerned about noise. They thought that the concrete road was gonna be noisy. Um it was just gonna take away from the farm field and all of that. Uh so we we took a step back, we looked at what the impacts would be that and mainly when doing a concrete roadway, you end up. Creating a very large footprint. Uh meaning you take a lot of right away. Um and this corridor has a lot of uh prescriptive right away in it. Not all of it has been platted, so. Uh we knew that there was gonna be some very large impacts if we did that. So originally, we had looked at a sixty foot corridor, which is consistent with what the county does when we add a. Shoulders to a roadway. And uh to get enough room for all your infrastructure. And get everything in place. Uh. By going through that process, we found out that the impacts were just gonna be a little bit too high. Uh both to the environmental and to right away impact, so we scaled it back to a bituminous roadway. So it is gonna be a bituminous roadway. And that'll alleviate some of that noise that a lot of citizens were concerned about. Um also, we scaled back. From the full sixty foot of right away through the whole corridor to just what we need, so. That it's not gonna be a corridor of sixty feet of right away, it's still gonna. Kinda go in and out as you, as it is today, but it's just gonna be what we need to to fit in our roadway footprint. And our drainage infrastructure. Uh it is a ru- will be rural, is not curb and gutter, except for one turn lane where we are installing. About five hundred feet of curb and gutter, very small portion of it. Uh but being that it is rural. And as most rural roadways you see, the drainage just runs off into the ditch. And it's allowed to do that. But with. The additional uh. Impervious surface that we're adding to the roadway, adding the shoulders. Uh we're required to treat that water. We can no longer just let it run off. Into the ditches unless there is no feasibility to actually. Get some of that sediment off the, out of the roadway water. Before it gets back into a wetland or to an outfall. So uh with this project, uh we're proposing to have ditches. Uh that convey that water to three localized ponding areas. Uh where that water will be treated. So it's not storm sewer per se. Uh as far as piping it to a location, it's ditching it to a location where it can be treated, settled out. And then released back into uh wetland or an outfall. Uh. There's three ponds that we're proposing. Uh below the hill there, we do have a lot of grade on that road. It it comes down pretty hard. From the north to the south, uh there's no issue with getting water to where we want it to go. Uh. Will be required to. To install two wet ponds. And we're looking at one, the very first, the south pond down at uh. County Road one sixty three. That would have uh the ability to infiltrate. Right now, we're in the geotechnical phase of seeing if that's actually possible or not. There are a lot of clay soils here in Malvin. So uh we're working our way through the geotechnical information, both for the roadway and for our drainage uh requirements, so. With that, I can just. Give you a quick update. Uh we're basically at sixty percent plans right now, or last month. Uh we'll be progressing through our environmental documentation and all our wetland permitting. And getting all our ducks in a row there. Um it will be moving to a ninety percent plan. And another open house to be held here. Very possibly in October to update the residents of Malvin. Uh just to give them an update on the project and also we'll have a very good idea of how to stage our traffic control. And how we'll manage traffic during the construction of the roadway project. Um right now, we believe that it will be detoured. Uh it'll be open to to local traffic. But through traffic will be detoured. Uh we've reached out to Sherburne County as we generally stay on county roads uh for a signed detour. And the closest route would be to go to the east and Sherburne County has allowed us to. Use their roads to get our detour around. It's the shortest route, so uh they're gracious enough to allow us to do that for this project. Um so you say we'll have another open house to update the public at that time and in October. We'll have a very good understanding of. Of how we're gonna do all of the staging. Right now, it looks like it'll be broke up into four pieces. Um starting at the south and working its way north. Uh the project itself starts right there at County Road sixty four and it works all the way. To about five hundred feet south of County Road sixty five on the north end. And we're leaving that little segment out uh in case we. Were identifying uh maybe an intersection project at a future date. Um for that four way stop on the top of the hill, there's a lot of issues involved with that. Um and a lot of preliminary work that has to be done in order to make that. A state aid intersection. So we're stopping just short of that intersection, so we don't have. Of a good portion of our work being torn back up to produce another project there at that intersection in the future, so. Um with that, like you said, the. Right away agents have been involved uh already. They're, they've reached out to several of these homeowners. Uh the ones that we need to require property from. And also the pounding locations. We've had meetings with the the owners of that property as well. Um that will continue all the way through into probably November, December. Uh at that time, our final plans will be done and we'll be looking to advertise this project in January. So uh construction will begin uh May of twenty twenty six. And we expect it to be completed. Probably by the first of November of twenty twenty six, that one season. Any questions?
Yeah, quick one. I'll I'll start off with questions.
Sure.
So initial um. Concept of cost was six point five million to the county, uh now then it's portioned seventy five thousand, switching from. Concrete to bituminous. Is that gonna reduce our costs? That's question one. And then you made a comment about right away, you said we just take what we need. What does that mean? Is that going from sixty feet to thirty feet? What does that look like?
Okay, so.
Can you be more clear?
The first question is the the cost component that we sent out to six point five. That is the bituminous roadway, not concrete. So the concrete estimates were up in the range of about nine million. Total for the two miles to the county cost.
Start off to seventy five.
Yeah, with, under the bituminous roadway, how it's designed today. Um. As far as the second question there. Uh lost track of thought.
Right away.
There you're right away, if we're taking that whole corridor. So what that meant was. In some areas where we are able to shift the roadway, we are doing so. So today, Bow Street is perfectly straight. Uh but the corridor right away does this. It 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 meanders, so it's not a consistent with, it bounces in and out. Where we have, where there's been developments and there's been platted property. We had the ability to uh. Push out the roadway in one direction or east or west. To allow to move away from homeowners, farms, things that are very close to the roadway, that if we just made it straight. We were gonna have uh big impacts to those homes. So rather than do that, uh we implemented two very large. Curves to the west. Where we push the the center line of the roadway to the west to pull away from the east side. Um just to reduce impacts.
Is that, is there a picture included? I haven't seen anything.
I sent one and then I do have a layout, a full layout, a paper layout here as well. Oh, should I? There it is.
Is that basically the layout?
Yep, yes. We'll send in a separate email. Yeah. So next week, we plan to take the layout that was provided here and that'll be put up on our website as our new, as we've reached the sixty percent. To put it back out to the to the public. Um.
That'd be very helpful.
Yep.
For those that are.
So it's there. And then like I said, I have a paper one here. You guys can. Have them look through it at your leisure as well. Um. That's one of the areas where there's a a bowl to move away from that farm, where we have additional right away on the west side, but we don't have any on the east, so. We took advantage of the county's right away that we already own and moved it away to to reduce the impact to that farm. And we did that in two locations where we could. Um actually. Push it out and and try to fit it in that right away. A little better than just going straight down the road as the road was straight today. Uh to reduce impacts. Um so the right away could be anywhere from. At a minimum, it would be forty two feet basically needed. From the fogline or the edge of mat of the paved roadway, the actual travel lane. You need thirty feet of clearance to any obstruction, so that means. There's overhead power out there, overhead power poles right now only like sixteen feet from the road. That does not mean state aid requirements. We need to move them out. To to uh thirty feet to the face of those poles from the edge of that roadway to meet that uh requirement. Get it out of the clear zone. So the minimum right away would be forty two feet basically. Thank you. To get that out there. Um and it could be as much as sixty in some areas, depending on where it's at, but it's gonna vary. It's gonna vary how much we need based on our construction limits. Some areas where the. The the homes of the property maybe are very flush to the existing roadway. We don't, we don't plan on changing the vertical profile a lot of the roadway. We may try to pull it down if anything. Just because of the steep shoulders that are in place today. It's just gonna help us. Flatten things out and make it safer if you were to leave the roadway. Um. So some of those areas where it's very level to where the construction is, our construction limits will basically in the, and the ditching will come in. So less right away would be needed in those locations, so. But basically, how how I reference that is is what we need is what is needed. For the construction and the construction.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
I do have a a couple. Um. The big one is the seventy five thousand dollars. I mean, um this is a county road. Um it's not a city road, so we're asking us to spend seventy five thousand dollars. Plus. Coordinating um. Getting permits from the Upper Run River watershed, so are those permit costs included in that?
Permitting is basically, well, through the city, but it's the realm up here. Um. Our cost for those permits would be included in that. Uh that can explain all of basic costs that are involved in this, but a normal J P A. Uh just covers. What we're gonna cop share in, in most cases on a on a large project like this, it's. Not a, not a huge amount to the city.
Mm-hmm.
But they get a big city benefit to it. He could speak to the.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I I would, I guess I I think seventy five thousand dollars is a lot of money to the city. Um it's a county. It's a county project. Um you're not only asking us to to spend seventy six thousand dollars. Um. It looks like there's other costs associated in here, and then we have long term maintenance um in relationship to a county road. Um I know that the county is trying to reduce their costs. Um but I don't feel as a city, we should be the one to have to. Pay for the reduction in your your cost.
That's strange, I mean. Um go ahead, sir. These are, these are great questions, council member, and I. I was gonna have Jeff go over the geometrics, then I was gonna transition a little bit, so if you would let me do that, I'd maybe answer some of your questions. I hear your concerns. Um first, I wanna mention, I wanna elaborate more on um. What Jeff meant by, what we meant by the taking of the right away. So the original thinking was a sixty foot corridor. And that's independent of what we need, so Jeff identified a few needs for clear zone. We need, we need clear zone, we need to own the clear zone to keep it as an obstacle free zone. We need the back slopes of ditches to convey water, so. With this project and a couple other projects in the county, we've taken on the the idea that we're, our right away is not gonna be. A straight sixty foot corridor, whether we need it or not, we're gonna be more flexible and contact sensitive. And the right away line's gonna jog in and out and it's gonna be. Taking what we need in the form of clear zone or conveyance of water or infrastructure ponds, it might grow out, so that's. That's been a change of thinking since the last time we were at this council, and it's based on feedback from residents of this project and other projects as well. And relating to costs with the pond and maintenance, which are great points that I specifically brought a couple of points to discuss here, I wanna get into. Again, who was, who was here last time I talked? I remember some faces here. As an engineer, I tend to elaborate, so I got my short version, and if you have any follow up questions, I'll I'll answer them.
Thank you for the short version.
So I wanna get into um, first of all, I've been here almost twenty years. I've had a couple of projects and now then I've never. So I want to get into, first of all, I've been here almost twenty years. I've had a couple of projects and now then I've never had to pond. Usually in now then. So having a pond associated with an Inoka County project is for me a first. And with those ponds, there are responsibilities. And for their south cities and counties, we have ponds almost on every single project. So these G P's deal with maintenance and costs and everybody down there is comfortable with them. So I understand up here, this is the first time you're seeing this. So a lot to take in. So I'm going to kind of speak to why we're required to use these and where these numbers are coming from. So the question might come up, why do we need the pond? Short version, as a municipal separate stormwater agency, you know, county is regulated by the M P C A regarding maintaining and improving total maximum daily load requirements for stormwater runoff. Contaminants we're required to mitigate for include dirt and dissolved solids. For example, particulate and dissolved solids, phosphorus dirt, you know, things that come up with the runoff. What are we required to treat that before we release it into the environment? So again, we are required by the M P C A to meet these water quality standards for certain reconstruction projects that exceed a threshold of impact, which is more than one acre of new and previous or reconstructed. This project exceeds both of those. So we're required by the M P C A to investigate water treatment. The most common and cost-effective method is implementation of stormwater ponds of this project. You know, there's three of them. So normally in now then, we're doing a lot of reconditioning projects where the reconstruction standards don't trip. We're not adding a lot of impervious, we're not adding shoulders for long lengths of road. Even if we are doing all that, a lot of times now then it's very flat. We've never been able to convey any water. We don't want to, we don't want to introduce grade and curb and gutter to force water. It only flows downhill. So this is the first project, Bow Street, as Jeff alluded to, has a grade to it. The water is naturally flowing roadside ditches through a few localized low points. And if you notice the existing drainage patterns, that's where our ponds are. So this is unique that this is the first time we're able to convey water through a ditch system to ponds to actually meet all the M P C A standards. So with that, we are required to pond. We've engineered ponds that are going to meet all those standards. Again, that's the short version. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Glazer's got a question.
Who, who owns the land where the ponds are going to be located?
I don't know their names, but they're private property owners.
Okay. And so the the county basically does, does the county pay those property owners?
There's a right-of-way process. So in addition to the right-of-way core, there's a little bit more engagement with these property owners that have ponds on site. We've already been engaging with them. One site I think is owned by county property. It's already a county owned. I think there's two.
Two probably private.
So we've already, we've already met one-on-one with the one property owner and the second property owner is we're setting up a meeting in the near future. So we're going to engage with them. The county covers the cost for all the right-of-way for these ponds. So there's, there's these cutouts of right-of-way and there's a whole right-of-way process. I didn't bring right-of-way agents with me. I just want to learn more about that. So we can have a conversation, but we compensate them fairly, I would say. So with that, why are the ponds where they are? I kind of spoke to that. They go, ponds are in natural low points. So that's where the ponds end up. So with that, that's why we have to pond. You have an understanding of the project. So let's talk about this joint powers agreement, right? So joint powers agreements in the short version. Joint Powers Agreement, formal legal contract between two or more public agencies. I think you all know this, but the key features of the joint powers agreement, as you alluded to, defines project purpose, project scope, who is responsible for delivering what, plans, permits, right-of-way, and most importantly, project costs, who is paying for what? This G P facilitates cooperation for tasks such as allude to as maintenance. So G P reflects the Inoka County cost sharing policy with respect to project-specific costs. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to, again, very quickly, high-level walk through this G P. And tonight, we're not asking you to sign anything. These, these joint powers agreements are subject to negotiation. We'll work with the Shane here is the city engineer who worked with your council, worked with the county engineer to work out the details. We would like a joint powers agreement signed by the time we advertise the project. So we have basically the rest of this year to figure this out. I just want to throw these numbers out to you so that you start to think about them and plan for budgeting purposes. The number we throw out there, seventy-five thousand does cover a number of things and I'd like to touch on that a little bit without taking too much more time. And in fact, I'm going to skip most of this because I know you have a very long agenda. Let's just jump right to the the important things, which is cost you alluded to. So we're at seventy-five thousand dollars and the majority of that cost is related to drainage cost sharing. There are a number of other items, including curb and gutter. There's very little curb and gutter, but Inoka County's cost share agreement for outer curb and gutter is fifty percent city, fifty percent county. This is not an urbanized project. There's a very small number of curb. There's other prorated items such as mobilization. So your cost, I think your cost sharing in about a seven million dollar project, seventy-five thousand dollars, about one percent. So you'd pay for one percent of the mobilization, one percent of the traffic control, curb and gutter, and then drainage, I think are the major cost-sharing items in this project. And the vast majority of that is drainage structures. So the way the colony cost share agreement works out is it's based on contributing area. In this case, when we talk about contributing area, what water on the project site is flowing to the pond? A portion of it is from the road, from the county right-of-way. And some portion is from off right-of-way, cities, farm, adjacent farm fields. It all flows to these points. So the amount of water that we have to treat comes from both city and county sources. So it's broken down by percentage. In this case, I think it's something about forty percent of the water going to these ponds comes from city farm fields or adjacent city-owned right-of-way houses, front yards and stuff like that. Sixty percent is county. So the cost share works out, the drainage infrastructure for the control structure to control rate, any piping that's needed to pipe the water to the final outlet source, culverts, things like that are, you know, forty percent count, forty percent city and sixty percent counted by contributing area. That's where the majority of your cost comes from and that's worked out in our standard cost share. So G P's are subject to negotiations. We can work with Shane to refine that number. If you have a problem with it, we don't have to talk about tonight. But again, for the purposes of this discussion, for the first preliminary numbers, there's a contingency built in there with sixty percent estimate. These are all subject to change. We want to throw that seventy-five thousand dollar number just to get you thinking about it, facilitate discussions moving forward. So if you have any specific questions, we can start to talk them tonight or we can, you know, we'll obviously have future needs to specific, specific issue or you know, separate needs with the engineer and any council members that want to address this separately. But so kind of answer some of your questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor.
One other thing that I wanted to mention, you did allude to and catch on, it's a good catch, is the maintenance portion. So per cost sharing, first, Inoka County state policies. We picked up on the city has to maintain these ponds, right? So what does that mean? There's a couple of components to maintenance. There's general day-to-day maintenance. If the outlet gets clogged or the grass is cut or something like that, the the city will have to do that. If, and there's additional stipulations such as sediment monitoring, which you might have to over a certain period of time, you know, survey the pond to make sure the sediments aren't building up too much. And if it does, I don't see any reason that there would be any reason to, in fact, in any of our ponds in our county that we've built, that I have built, I don't think anyone has had to dredge or anything like that that I'm aware of. But if that would need to be happened somewhere down the road, you'd be responsible for that. And that's I think Shane's going to talk at some point, maybe in the next bullet point or your next agenda item with private utilities. This is not something that's new. You've done, it's new because you're doing it for a county-owned pond, but I think the city might own development ponds where it's, you have to be the process in place to deal with maintenance of ponds. But this is the first Inoka County pond where you're going to have to maintain it. And that's all discussed in that G P. So I'd refer to read that language. If you have any questions, reach out to us.
All right, Councilmember.
Well, again, I, to me, this is a county job. You're doing it. I I don't feel that there should be a burden placed on our residents to cover the cost. You, the parties agree that it is in their best interest. Well, this is your G P A. So you're, you know, you're assuming this is in our best interest. Again, I just, I would ask that in, when Shane has conversations with you that we have the smallest impact financially that we can possibly have. Seventy-five thousand dollars is a lot of money to us.
What number do you feel would be more appropriate?
I, I would start at zero. That would be my. I don't know how, I mean, I'm only one of the people in the council, but.
I think you could resonate that amongst all. So our goal would be to remove or eliminate the costs altogether. So zero is a great starting point. And if we go to two dollars, I mean, we could probably talk. I love the negotiates. Shane, you said you're going to be part of this negotiation?
Well, Mr. Mr. Mayor, normally what engineering staff does is we take a look at the technical data. So we look at the drainage areas and, and if I don't agree with a particular drainage area, I might bring that up to county staff. But, but I think the the bigger issue here is there's a county policy in place. They have a, they've adopted a cost sharing policy. And it doesn't matter how much I negotiate, I'm not going to be able to change it or, you know, just staff's not going to be able to change it. And so if there is a if there's a desire by the city to see this project advance and be completed, you know, the the easiest path forward, even even though it costs money, is to agree to the J P A. If that, if that, the money that's involved in the long-term maintenance responsibilities is just too too expensive at this time, then, you know, maybe the talks would be delaying payments for a certain number of years. I've seen that in other, with other counties, maybe delaying the project. You know, those are really some of the options or go knock on some county commissioner doors and try to, you know, convince them to adopt a special policy.
We can certainly invite them to a meeting and have a, have an open discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Swanson.
Yeah, thank you. I would just like to agree with Councilwoman Rainville. I think, you know, just thinking about this, I understand what you're saying about how those drainage ponds are going to be filled with, pretend from runoff from city property, but those properties already exist. That runoff is already going to some. And there's no drainage ponds. If a drainage pond is needed, it's because of the silvery pond, right? I mean, is there already flooding in those areas?
No, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
The M P C A regulations, the M P C A's philosophy is to leave the situation better condition than it was. So being that we're opening up roadway, we're going through the travel of reconstructing the roadway. All aspects of the roadway, including drainage, are looked at to make the after-product comply with current standards. So you have a lot of fields and a lot of runoff now that are going straight into the adjacent wetlands. While we're capital, we have the opportunity to improve the situation. So that's kind of how the M P C A writes their, their, their policy. So we're required, you're correct, it does go there today, but it's not treated today. Because we're rounding it through a potential area that we can make the situation better, we're required to do so.
Follow-up question. Those, and you may have said this and I just missed it, but the, where the drainage ponds are going, are you, are you purchasing that from the current landowners, the county?
We're purchasing the land rights to put the pond in there. And if you want to learn, the high level of that process is we have a right-of-way staff who hires independent appraiser, appraisers to take our, our construction limits, our footprint that we're going to take. We, we send it to the independent appraiser who doesn't work for Inoka County. They appraise the land and they make, there's a negotiation to make a fair offer for damages for for each property. If the homeowner doesn't like that, they can hire their own independent appraiser. They give their appraiser and somewhere in a negotiation, they arrive for compensation. So we work with the property owner. At the end of the day, we will get what we want. It's just the, the process to establish what is just and fair is long and drawn out. And that's why we're, you know, we're in June here and we're not advertising till December. That, that can be up to a year process. We don't anticipate that, but we plan for it if it drags out and.
And I guess this is a question for us. I don't know the answer to this. If the county purchases land from us, is that eliminated from our tax base? They don't pay property tax on it.
They're not purchasing it from us. It's in the homeowner.
Well, no, I know, but then the homeowner is no longer paying his property tax on that portion of property. And the county, do they pay us property tax? No. So we're losing the tax base and incurring costs for those drainage ponds.
Councilmember Glazer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, this project is, as you stated earlier, is one of the primary reasons for this is safety issues. Are there, are there incidents that have occurred in the last several years that could have been mitigated?
I don't have the crash history in in my head. I do know that this stretch of road does not meet current, current county state aid standards for this classification of roadway. There are no shoulders out there that the in slopes do not meet. If a car does veer off the road, it's going to get sucked down into the ditch. So at the very minimum, we're proactive in bringing this road up to standards. We're adding the the necessary eight-foot bitumen shoulders with crash avoidance and things of that nature. We're flattening the in slopes. If you do veer off that eight-foot shoulder, you can recover from them. So we are bringing it up to current standards. Jeff alluded to historically, we overlay these, these roads. And every year, every time we overlay, it's a little bit higher. So those in slopes get a little bit steeper. We never address the root cause. And this, this corridor here has been identified along with a couple of other corridors and a couple of other cities. We, we finally, in the last budgeting couple of cycles here, have been able to allocate money to start addressing the root instead of just putting a Band-Aid and dealing with the cracks, you know, going in and doing the right thing and bringing it up to current standards. So being that this is a, is a, is a minor arterial with a number of eighty-two, we're, we're just bringing it up to city standards. We're being very proactive. I'm sure there are crashes. I just, it's not, it's not to the point where it's really reactive, it's more being proactive.
And, and I imagine there's been traffic studies that have been done to show the increased volume over X period of time.
Correct.
And it's increased dramatically.
It's going to be based, well, I don't know, I don't think that it's increased dramatically. There's anything other, any increase additional to the standard background rate. I think it's, I don't even see the number, but it's I would say that we were working with Shane in in the previous city administrator, understanding what development is likely to happen in the next ten to fifteen years. And that has entered the discussion of where do we have these full access intersections? Where are we putting in lefts? We're going to coordinate with the development of this area. And I would say there's a lot of land up here that's ready for developing. So I know the property owner that has the the pond we've already met with alluded to wanting to develop imminently. So I would say that because there hasn't been much development, that number hasn't spiked, but I would anticipate the spike in the future, based just based on the availability of land and development potential out here.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one of the Swanson, go ahead. Just one last question for me. It sounds like you're saying traffic hasn't noticed the increase at any point or unusually. And I guess my question is specifically as it relates to the one sixty-nine project. Did traffic really not increase on Bow during the one sixty-nine project?
I don't want to, I wasn't involved with the traffic. I can get those numbers for you and I just have those content and get you studies of the results of the one sixty-nine project. I would anticipate that it did spike because I believe with the work that went over there, a lot of more people were taken by us. So you're right, it probably did spike due to that work, but that's kind of a, an oddity. That's not a normal increase. It's directly related to some construction that's temporary and now that it's done, it's going to go back down to normal. So I would, I would have said if we would have, if we would have counted that spike and generated a project based off that spike, that would have been ill-advised because it's a temporary blip that.
Well, and where I was going with it is I'm just wondering if the increased traffic potentially accelerated the need for this project? Is that measurable or is that just not?
It could, but.
Possible.
Yes. Again, I could be totally misspeaking and there is a spike that I'm not aware of. But certainly if there is, has been development in this area, the number is, again, I I shouldn't speak to a specific number because I don't know that off the top of my head, but I would say that the primary driver of this project is the pavement's failing. You know, a few years back, we took a look at, do we want to just put another Band-Aid on it or do we have the funds as a county to do the right thing and bring this thing up to standards? And I think the decision at the time was rather than throw another Band-Aid on it, let's do the right thing. Let's, let's bring it up to city standards. We have the money to do it and that's kind of the genesis of the project.
And I guess to wrap up my thought, my, my thought is, or thinking is, and I have no idea if it's feasible or not, but if it did accelerate the need or the wear and tear, I'm wondering if there's any money to be got from that project covering some of our costs for.
That, that's a, that's a great point. And I know some bigger projects that push traffic away from a corridor while it's under construction to mitigate for increased traffic isn't, isn't, is something that has been done in the past. Seeing that that project is done and the traffic number should be calming down, we wouldn't have the ability to recoup that money, I don't think. But that's a great question. And, you know, I will follow up. I will look into that. But I, I don't believe there is any money that would be available for that.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Just a reminder, we're over two hours in and we are not even halfway yet. So any other questions for this gentleman?
I apologize for taking up so much time, but like I said, this is just more of an information. We're always available. Just you know, contact us through Shane, contact us directly through the website. There'll be another public engagement meeting in October. If any questions come up, if any of your constituents have questions, you can refer them directly to us. Anything at all, just we're, we're happy to be available for you.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting tonight. Definitely more clear.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is number eight, memo by Tools for Business regarding twenty twenty-six budgeting needs for I T.
Hello.
Well, sir, can you state your name, please?
Yes, I'm Craig Stolpe. And I do the computer work for the city.
Thank you.
So I'm here because Natalie would bring some of the information that I would give her to the council and then the council would ask her some questions. And then the council would ask her some questions and then she would come to me with the questions. And then she would come back to the meeting and get new, back and forth. And I thought it might be helpful to answer your questions directly. So if there's just some questions you want to ask. Um, I think it would be along the lines of why do we need MiFi? Uh, there was one about of the new server, potential for a new server next year. Um, and then I had an idea to save the city a few bucks, but if you want to start with me answering. Any of your questions, I'd be happy to.
Maybe you just start with the server and tell us what our best option is and what we should budget.
Uh, in my experience with servers, they usually run uh at about the five-year mark. You want to start uh the replacement process. And I'm not real familiar with cities and budgets, but it was my thought that since the server hits its five-year life and ends its uh service contract. It's warranty period next May, that maybe it had to get into some budget. Long before that to get replaced next year. So uh we did not install the server. We inherited the server. We've been doing the city's work since September. So it's been in production long before we were around, but it's nearing the end of its life. Uh, it goes out of warranty, as I said, next May. So if the server was to be replaced. Um, a server of that side, we usually use Dell. That was a Lenovo server. You know, it'd be around eight thousand bucks for the hardware and then, you know, take some time to piece it all together and migrate from old to new. But um, you could also rebuild a server. We're again more familiar with Dells. Uh, but normally we can rebuild a Dell for a third or even a quarter of the cost of new. And usually extend the life by three years. So you could do that as well and that'd be maybe two to three thousand dollars. Or the city might consider uh migrating to the cloud. That's not always a good option because of legacy. Software like the budget or the accounting software. It might not work on a cloud server, but it's something we could evaluate. And if you wanted to move to like the Microsoft for your cloud services, we could look at the cost of that. That becomes more of a monthly cost. I think I put in my little notes that you might have got that it's kind of a pay me now or pay me later thing. You don't have a lot of upfront costs when you move to the cloud, but then your monthly costs to Microsoft go up dramatically. So, um.
Would we possibly be able to purchase server, view a rebuilt server that'd be good for three years for around two thousand dollars?
Two to three thousand, depending on what you do with drives, mostly on a rebuild that's drive, sometimes fans, sometimes you add more RAM. You update the operating system. So you'd go from, uh, I think it's on Windows twenty nineteen standard, you'd go to Windows twenty twenty-five standard. Um, so that cost, I believe at this time it's twelve hundred and sixty-five dollars from Microsoft. And then on top of that, you would just evaluate what drives were best at the time and set out the price. Uh, the cost to us, you know, maybe a half a day to do it, half day of labor. It's not a huge deal. It's usually something you do over a weekend and you don't have to sit and babysit it. You know, you press a few buttons, go away for half a day, come back, press a few more. But yeah, I, I would say, you know, let's say twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars. But there'd be some wiggle room in there depending on what kind of drives.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Swanson.
Um, would there be any uh other savings if we went with the cloud-based like through Microsofts? I know they have a lot of services that can assist you in automating processes. And I, I mean, I don't know what we would automate. But typically, if, if we switch to an Azure uh cloud type thing, I, I assume it would streamline or automate at least a couple of things. Do you, in your experience, is it safe to have time?
So we're only a company of three and our uh Microsoft guy, Dan, would be way better at answering that question. Um, my understanding of it. Um, there's, there's like two aspects of it. The actual server part, the hosted server part, you really don't gain anything a- as what you're saying. It's more of just forklifting your server to the cloud. Now it's hosted by somebody else. And um you pay a fee to have them host it. The other part, the SharePoint part where you're, you're trying to maybe just leverage your teams like storage. There might be some advantages to using other products in the Microsoft suite to automate things or secure things.
Well, and that was sort of my question. If we're paying Azure, I'm wondering if there are any other benefits from that subscription aside from just the cloud server. Do we get access to, you know, other fancy software that I have no idea how to use that would help us streamline things?
I'm going to have to flaunt my ignorance here and say I'm not sure. There's about forty different um licensed apps. That go with like the standard license that you already have. And when you add on the premium licenses and the E three and then the E five and ratchet it up to put more online. You just get that many more Microsoft products. I'm sure there's benefits to some of them. I wouldn't know where to start to, how to measure if those benefits outweigh the cost. You're paying like twelve fifty a month for a premium license right now for each user. And that gives you your teams and your mailboxes and whatnot. Again, I didn't set that up. I inherited it. It's fine. It's good product for what the city needs. But if you start ratcheting it up, like a premium license goes to twenty bucks per user per month. And then if you go to E three, I think it's twenty-two and then, you know, and the city's paying Microsoft directly. We're not, um, we're not. A digital locker for your Microsoft licenses. The city just pays Microsoft correct. So the costs.
So it sounds like anything else with Microsoft would just be a separate deal. It's nothing to do with the server. I mean, we have just been paying for the server and that's the analysis is how it compares to a hard server versus cloud server.
Right, right, yeah. And it's definitely a payment hour, pay me later. Microsoft is really good at hooking you and then driving up the cost. You know, they'll herd you to the cloud and then they want their monthly fee. So over time you'll pay, usually. All right, in the past, in my assessments, there was about a sixty-month. Period before it reached equity for what you saved versus what you paid, you know. But now it seems like it's more half that. Like if you buy your own, in thirty months, you'd be ahead of the game on price. So uh, that's the server thing. And then I um, I think somebody had a question on MiFi. If that's still a question about the security, if not, you can.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Customer Brad.
Yeah, that was me. I just brought up, you know, basically we're using a MiFi as I understand it, just to get some sort of remote access.
That's correct.
And if we, if we enable the VPN, that, that, that remote access wouldn't be necessary. If in a separate device, and I know we're paying like forty dollars a month, I think for the MiFi. So basically if we enable the VPN, then any place where anyone had access to internets from. Caribou to uh hotel or wherever it is, literally it'd be click on the VPN, put in a password and now your, your laptop is on a secure network.
That, that is really, I, and that's. That's right, almost like how it could work. The security breach is in using somebody else's uh network versus your own. Uh, we didn't sell the MiFi. We have no benefit from the MiFi, so I'm not trying to defend it here. But if you go to a hotel and you use their Wi-Fi, you're now on their network first before you establish your VPN connection, which you are correct, it is secure. Just being on their network exposes you to sniffers and hackers.
You would have to be aware of, you know, anytime you're connecting on a, to a, a, a public network that doesn't have a password, obviously. But most, you know, as if there's places where you, as you check in, you get a password, here's on my, on my network and.
It definitely helps.
Have a VPN that you do have access that way. So that'd be potentially, um, is there, how mu- how mu- you know. I know you listed it on the list of things. How much is, how much does it take to set up the VPN?
We already have it. It's already part of your Sonic wall. It's, you own the licenses. There, there's no monthly fee for it. It's. We already have it.
Right. Then my other question was regarding the server. Basically, as I understand it, we're mainly just using a server for um file storage.
And uh one app, Banyan.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's an application.
So in the app, so what was the last use?
It's the financial software.
Yeah, it, it's software. It's called an app, but in that use, it's called an app server, but it's one program.
It's a program that's, that's server-based.
In other words, it is secured file storage.
So the other.
It's a print server.
Right. So the other advantage of keeping the server local is that is a ginormous uh. Uh, value to the city that we wouldn't necessarily want to, that there, there could certainly be risks of using clouds as clouds could theoretically be breached. Um, and, and having it locally, we know where it is where versus if the cloud went down, we have no way of accessing it software now until the cloud came back up. So that would be another advantage of sticking to the server and having that locally, as I understand it. Would that be correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Especially because we've been trying to grow all of the money. And everything is stored in that server.
What are the recommendations to file?
Uh, there have been breaches. And we do sometimes store, you know, if anybody can get into our system and they can get into baseline, then it's a threat or something there. We don't believe. But that was a recommendation in the class.
Customer replacement.
Currently, we're, for our internet access, we're being served through Arbit, correct, through our contracts. Is, is there, will we at some point with the. New fiber project be served by Comcast? And if so, is there any change in that cost of service?
Well, we uh. As a user inherently, um, we inherently have least of our, our target to really do anything. So I have to check if Comcast is really close to this area. However, I would do that.
Arbit is a good product and they're competitive with Comcast. Uh, good service, good, good product. I have an idea to save you some money on that too. We can get to that next.
Mr. Mayor. Customer response and go ahead.
It's sort of a wacky idea, but wouldn't ISP ever help you purchase a server so that you're not using more bandwidth accessing the cloud? Does that even offend? It just seems like they might have an interest in not, it's not going on the bug. It's been increased.
That's an interesting thought. I, I haven't seen that out there. It's an interesting idea, like if there was an incentive to keep you. Away from it or to herd you one way or the other. I'm not sure. Good thought, though.
Mr. Mayor. Customer Ryan. One more thing, I'm just not sure where we're at on the, on the list, but if we're talking about new workstations. Knowing, yeah, knowing full well that Windows ten is going into life in, in October. Is it that these workstations are that old where they're not able to be upgraded to Windows eleven or they're just on Windows ten now?
That's right. There's three in the environment that can't be upgraded, but they're not critical, mission critical. There's some things with backups. I don't want to get into the weeds. I too am aware of the time that this takes, but I could give you an assessment. Email it out on backups and what would be better. Um, but one of, I'm sorry, two of the old systems, we just redeployed as backups. And then one was in this building just downstairs acting as sort of a monitor for the wireless. And it was a freebie, so we gave it to you and it was old and we knew it wasn't going to last past October. So.
And obviously Windows ten will run after October.
It will run, yeah.
Right, yeah. It's just a matter of what updates that Microsoft is pushing.
That's right. And we, and we can still protect it uh with set one protection, you know, E D R protection after October. A lot of places, I, I'm new to government work and I always said that governments wanted to be ultra-compliant. We go out of compliance, security compliance after October fourteenth, but it doesn't mean they stop working. I still run controllers with Windows XP. I mean. They still work. They're just not very secure.
Right.
So we'd look forward to your email uh with your recommendations. I think that'd be a great addition.
Be happy to.
Is there any other questions for uh?
I, I have one thing I'd like to.
Great, you to bring, to bring that up.
It was a pass to here. So this building has a Arbit connection. The fire department has an Arbit connection. And the city hall has a fire, our, our big connection. Two hundred bucks about for this one fire department and the city hall. Uh, is four hundred dollars. So we could tunnel right to that building there. You don't have to go deep because it's low vault. We could do a little tunnel into there. Somebody wanted to put a computer in there anyways. We could put us uh that computer and put a network switch and that would extend the network to the fire department. And we could get rid of one of these um Arbit connections when the time came, you know. And we could also get rid of the wireless bridge and have a little bit more stability with the cameras. Um, Casey did a great job of creating the wireless bridge and getting the cameras to work. But wired is just way more robust than wireless for that type of uh ongoing feed. So it would cost, you know, five or six hundred bucks to throw that together, but after a few months, it would pay itself back if we could drop one of the Arbit things. And I think I have enough leverage with Arbit where I might be able to get them in a figure four headlock and get them on a contract. So I'm gonna try anyways, but then there's another thing that might cost more, but it might save even more money. So Zayo came through how many years ago and they ran a bunch of fiber? And there's some fiber connections that are running around here that I can't trace. And I, I don't do, I don't have fiber tracing equipment, you know, Ethernet, V N C, coax, no problem, fiber. I don't have the equipment. But I think there might be some lines that are already run from the city hall to here and to the fire department. Which means we could get rid of both the extra Arbit connections, just have the one at the city hall and extend the network over fiber. With a couple of switches. So in other words, you could put a few bucks into this thing, maybe. And eliminate two monthly costs, which would be pretty close to four hundred dollar a month savings. So I was kind of just looking for permission to spend some of your money to try to save money down the road. If you thought that was a good idea too.
What does it cost to ping the uh, the fiber?
How, how much?
What's the cost of ping the fiber to, to you?
I, I just need to find somebody and hire them who's got the equipment to, to try to uh tone out the fiber and then see, you know.
So can you get a, get a quote and send it in and?
Absolutely, yeah. Just wanted to make sure it was something that you guys are interested in.
What I don't want to do is give permission to say, hey, just go forward, but we, we need a quote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Customer Ryan. Yeah, Natalie and I talked them all. I don't know, it was a good year, year and a half ago about doing some consolidation after things kind of after we. When we were in a position and now that we have fiber in place to reduce the costs that there's theoretically could be some consolidating done. Um, the one thing to keep in mind is the fire department needs some sort of backup, whatever that is.
Okay.
To just whatever, whatever they have, I believe that that was part of the reason that um they, we, at the time, we. They were using Zayo for the backup or they actually, we still had a, and I don't know if we still are now paying. Um, just centrally because that was the.
An old landline.
For the, for the fire department.
Good thought, yeah.
But yeah, I'm all for it. I mean, that should be, we should, we should be able to seek theoretically see considerable savings by eliminating a couple, you know. Four hundred dollars, either two or four hundred dollars a month over time.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
Um, the recycling center was mentioned. So anything that we do. That um allows us to um. Uh, use the recycle center. We can use grant money towards that. Anything doing, so if we are going to try to upgrade the system so that our cameras are working better, that we can use our grant money for.
Oh, that's excellent. And if we, if we do.
Have to buy equipment, whatever that's.
Either way, that we would go with either the fiber or just run an Ethernet through there. We would still need the Ethernet from here to there. I mean, a couple hundred bucks, no problem. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Craig. All right, we're moving on to item number nine, which is engineering. So Shane, I think you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I believe the first item is the part one uh M S four application. And that's a, a really simple application form that is required to be sent into the N P C A. Uh, I think it was May twentieth uh is the deadline. Uh, we already have an M S four uh permit. And so this would just be continuance of that permit coverage. Uh, this is, again, this is a really easy application form. A four hundred dollar application fee goes with it. Uh, but I do anticipate that later this year, we'll have a much more involved application form. Uh, due to several hundred pages, several hundred questions. So.
So this one, that is what clarification, this one gets us, uh, the application is good for five years, this particular one?
Yeah, see, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's correct, but there is, the application is broken into two parts. This is part one and part two. I don't know, I can't say exactly when it's going to come out, but it's anticipated to come out later this year.
Okay. So.
Think we have to wait. We do have to wait.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. We started staring at a resolution right now.
But if we want to talk about the bids and plans, I don't know if that's something that engineer wants to get start or wait. Engineer wants to get start or wait.
Are you gonna be referring to these maps or are you just give it to us for?
Mister Mayor. Customer Ryan, make a motion to approve the part one application for the MS four general permit.
All second. Okay. So we've got our uh, we got our motion, we got our second, we got all of our council members, all those in favor of the part one application. Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Any concern with counsel on that? I I don't know that it needs a vote. I think we can move forward with it.
Thank you.
Unless, Councilor Ryan, you tell me something different that I'm not aware of. Okay, so we should be able to move forward. Back to you, sir.
Uh, so Mister Mayor, the other item on the agenda is your twenty twenty five overlay project. Uh, so at the uh last meeting. Uh, whether you consider this project, you ordered the plans and spec and specifications. Those plans and specifications have now been prepared. Uh, and so now you have a couple of resolutions to continue to advance with that project. Uh, the first resolution would be a resolution approving the plans and specs and ordering the after bids. Uh, just a couple of uh. A couple of items on the plant and specs, so uh. The bids are scheduled to be open on June tenth at two P M. Uh, the specifications call for a substantial completion on September twelfth, twenty twenty five. And then final completion November first, twenty twenty five. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that the contractor is going to wait until then to uh complete this project, but generally what we find. Is when we give a a fairly large window, uh, we get the best prices. And because we're a little bit late getting these bids out to market on this project, we thought September twelfth was a good day. Uh, with that, uh, we've uh done a uh kind of a final engineer estimate based on the final construction plans. We're still right at that four hundred and three thousand, uh, that was included in the feasibility study, so no change there. Uh, so the, you have one resolution, that that first resolution again, uh, would be approving plans and specs and ordering after bids. Maybe I'll stop there if the case of any.
Yeah, it gets, but any questions for? For for Shane on this one? If not, Councilor Ryan, you want to go ahead?
Are you ready?
I think you can go ahead and consider these resolutions separated.
Alright, so Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion to um approve the plans and specs and and ordering the bids.
A second.
Councilmember Glazer, a second, perfect. We'll go, we'll go forward with our vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Back to you, Shane.
So Mister Mayor, this next resolution is setting the amount that will be assessed to the benefiting properties. And also calling for the assessment hearing. Uh, calling for the assessment hearing will require us to pick a date. Uh, because right now the date is blank in the resolution. Uh, as I just mentioned, the bid, the bid opening is scheduled for June tenth. Uh, so we probably want to target something a little bit later in June. I don't know if the city's planning on having a a second meeting in June, but maybe that second meeting date would be a good uh time to have that assessment hearing.
I'm not tracking a second meeting in June at all. Anybody else? Okay. So could it wait till the eighth of July or do we need to call, or is your recommendation to call another meeting in the end of June?
Uh, Mister Mayor, it could, it could wait till July eighth. Uh, bids are good for sixty days. Uh, it just, if if we wait, so. Uh. Maybe backing up a step, there are several different ways to uh structure assessment projects. But the city of now then has done for at least the past uh five or ten years. Is we have held the assessment hearing prior to awarding the the contract and that way. If there are any objections to the amount of the assessments, the city council is aware of those or knows those. Uh, before you award the contract. Uh, with that, you also you also accepting a little bit of risk. Because uh you're calling or you're setting the amount of the assessments before you actually have the bids back. Uh, some cities choose to have their assessment hearing after the project is complete. And that way they know all their project costs. The challenge with that is if they have properties that challenge the assessment. Uh, they don't know that after the project is done, you've already.
I prefer not to go that route.
Right.
I don't think that's the best option for residents. So asking the council, does it, I I think it makes sense then. So if bids are complete by what date in June, you said?
June tenth.
So what if we targeted that following week, like the seventeenth, it's, because we already got a council meeting on the tenth?
Can we just move that council meeting?
We could, but they're already set in every. So I would not recommend moving it. Now, if we would, we have all the bids in time for the council meeting on the tenth. We already have one on June tenth.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, uh, June tenth is uh. That date is based on advertising statutes because we're required to advertise for. Uh, a certain number of, or a certain amount of time before we can open bids. So we cannot make the, your your deadline for your council packet for the June tenth meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that in mind, I mean, July eighth is not a bad option. It just uh means that you can't award it until July eighth, which, you know, you know, really, I don't see it as the end of the world. Uh, there's still uh several weeks in July left and all of August and the first part of September. Uh, to construct this project, so uh again, it's just uh. You know, with these road projects and there's so many steps being involved, it is better to get started earlier. Uh, so keep that in mind for twenty twenty six if we want to do a road project, but.
Since we started later, here's gonna be my recommendation, we try to meet uh one more time in June. Not everybody's gonna be excited, but would would you guys be available on June seventeenth? And even if we kept it as a shorter meeting, then we could get it approved because we are starting later than what was recommended in the beginning. So open up the council for discussion and uh to see if the seventeenth would work.
I'm gonna throw it out.
So that would work for you?
I'm good.
Sadly, I'm missing us. I worked you.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, exactly. Rather than that, um. So everybody said yes, so. Um, Ms. Johnson, we put a council meeting on for the seventeenth. Uh, and then we can take care of the, review the bid process and understand it.
Would that be at six o'clock?
Check.
Mister Mayor. Is that just the hearing that night? I'm just, uh, if we're, if we're planning on a regular council meeting, we have no idea how long the hearing's gonna take. If if.
So let's just do the hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm, what I'm.
I would love to have like a set amount of time and not be here for four hours, so I think that'd be a great, then our project can move forward because we can get through it. So if we just kept at that. That's your recommendation also?
I think that would be better because if we're trying to do business and coordinating other schedules, we'd have no idea what time. The rest of the meeting would start, so I'd stick to just the hearing.
Are the council members good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, I think it makes sense, customer radio.
I mean, typically, our assessment hearings are not long. And it's, I mean, they're very quick.
That's correct. Yeah, generally, the residents have the most questions at the first hearing, the public improvement hearing. Uh, we, and there's fewer uh residents that attend at the assessment hearing, especially for. Uh, and a supplement of this amount, we might get a little bit higher attendance, you know, we're in the eight or ten thousand dollar range, but these are. Uh, in a three thousand dollar range.
Yeah. Just getting this punched in my calendar, so.
I would just ask that we. We leave it open for the ability if something else does come up that we have that time scheduled and we could, we could use it if we do. I mean, it's.
Not making a full council meeting, but leave it all optional if something else has to get done.
Yeah.
Could that work for you, customer Ryan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, okay.
Cause I, I mean, I I'm thinking an hour. For an assessment here.
Yes, please.
No, I mean, that's typically for an assessment hearings, an hour.
So back to you, Shane, anything else?
Uh, no, Mister Mayor, if there's no questions regarding that, then uh uh. Uh, you could call for a motion for the resolution, resolutions. Uh, calling for the assessment hearing.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I would move uh the resolution declaring the class to be assessed and ordering a preparation of proposed assessment. And notice of an assessment hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty five at six P M.
Perfect, anybody's second. Perfect, we got a second, let's move it to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Official, is that complete, uh, everything you have to cover, sir? Alright, so number nine is complete. We are moving on to number ten, planning and zoning. Cindy, you could start with monthly report. We go to Natalie and then back to Cindy.
So I'll just stand for any questions on the five minutes of report.
Hey, Natalie, uh, you're gonna cover the RCA requesting direction to. Lower the general planning invoices.
Okay, yeah. We had talked about trying to figure out how to lower the general planning invoices. So Cindy and I met, we kind of came up with a plan. She kind of went back and was going back and forth and dealing with some of the different residents and some of the issues that we have. I, you know, in the re, in the RCA, there is kind of a summary of what the issues are and why. It takes so long in our city, um, and I'm gonna go ahead and throw the ball back to Ms. Nash and let her. Explain some of it and she can use a couple of um currents. Applications, I guess. To kind of explain why.
This on page three twenty nine, that we're referring to. Ms. Nash.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, so um. Definitely appreciate the need and the desire to try to come up with ways to reduce the planning expenses in the city. Um, and believe me, a lot of this is not things that I would prefer to be doing on a daily basis, so. I genuinely would like to find a way to reduce some of these as well, um. Ultimately, though, the reason, after being here for a year, the reason I think. That it's really difficult to do that is. There, there's multiple aspects to it. So one, your ordinances are unnecessarily complicated. Um, and some cases are outdated. They're conflicting with each other in different parts. Um, and it's a very difficult thing to walk people through. Um, just as an example. Something as simple as calculating lot area. That seems like it should be simple, right? What's the perimeter of the lot, figure out the area? Well, no, it depends on the year that the property came into being. So we have to go back and figure out, go into literal county records and figure out how long that legal description has been on that parcel. To figure out which method of calculating it applies. Then even worse, once, even once we know that for this given property. How we use lot area is still a little different depending on whether we're calculating it for an accessory structure or how many animals you can have on it. And there's still multiple calculations for even any given property. So it would be nice to be able to go in and streamline your ordinances, take out all of those um. Situations that are in there that are causing it to be a situation where a resident can't just look at one place and figure out what. The answer to that question, whatever it is might be, how much accessory square footage can I have? Um, is this lot buildable? That's one that you had at your last meeting and you have on tonight's agenda as well. Recognizing a parcel that's meets and bounds parcel. For buildability and that's based upon some statements that are in your subrags. Um. It's necessary to figure out if they're buildable. They should have two septic systems available to them, et cetera. Um, but there's different ways of doing that that are more time efficient. Than the way we're having to do this right now, so. Um, using as an example, the one that was on your last agenda. That was actually a situation where I think everybody meant well, right? Um, a property owner had come in about four years ago wanting to split up. Some properties, they had a large parcel, they wanted to create it into three. But they didn't want to pay all the park dedication at that time, they didn't want to test for septics. So one of them was determined to be agriculture. And kind of set to the side, so that's the person you looked at at last. The previous meeting to this one. Um, that resulted then in that person buying a parcel that wasn't buildable at that point in time. Which is kind of an expectation of people that mostly if there, if something's been recently something that they think they should be able to build upon it. So then we had to go through that process of figuring out where the septics are. Um, as part of that process, we discovered that. Some information. Some different handling had occurred regarding the park dedication fees, so the city lost some park dedication fees on that one. Um, so it kind of compounds mistakes and so it's it's nice when you can get to a point where you treat everything basically the same. Everything happens at the same time, there is nobody. Um, paying park dedication fees later than another person, et cetera, just so that we can reduce the amount of time I'm spending, but also the amount of time that. Staff has to spend in looking up information and not knowing that um. Some of these things are um. That there might be different exceptions for different properties. We don't have to spend that time searching for those exceptions. Um. And I think I kind of covered all four of my recommendations in one fell swoop, but a big part of this is trying to get your ordinances. Into a situation where. All those carve outs don't exist to begin with and then streamlining the processes to go along with that.
Mister Mayor. I'm just curious, you know, I've heard a lot of sort of generalized talk about, you know, fixing the ordinances and I think that sounds like a great idea. I'm just wondering, I mean, how do we? How do we do it? Like, who, who does it? How quickly can we do it? I mean, how do we get this started? It seems like a no brainer.
So, there's multiple ways you can do it. Um, I do this all the time. And my suggestion here is to not use your existing ordinance and update from it. I would.
Zero.
Start from somebody else's that I have that's clean. And then I would add in your things, so your setbacks, your um, different uses in different districts. So I use their structure and their definitions. And formatting and then add your stuff into it to make it yours.
And would this be like a new project or above rookie projects or both of you? Like, I I guess.
Most of it.
You would do most of it. I think it sounds like an excellent idea to move that forward.
I mean, we would lose some things that you'd have. Again, there wouldn't, by doing this, the intent would be to eliminate the. Dozen ways of calculating lot areas, an example.
I think the key thing is putting it back into the city staff's court where they can actually answer a question instead of every question having to come to you. So I think a standardization, that's the term I'm gonna use, it's a complete standardization of the city ordinances. Keeping what is good for now then in now then's ordinances, but cleaning up the verbiage that have been written and rewritten and. So, so, but do we have a quote to do that? That's, that's the key question.
No, I haven't, I would propose to use my hourly rate to do that. Um, it's very risky. To um try to give a quote for me because I would give you a really high quote. Because I don't know how many public hearings you're gonna want to go through, et cetera, et cetera. I think we can keep the cost lower by just using the hourly rate.
I would prefer not to go that route. So is there another option where somebody could come in and give us a quote? And then you could provide a quote and we do the bidding process just like anything else, instead of. I I don't want to use an hourly rate. I want, so when you do projects, projects are done on a a bid process. This is, this would be considered a project. Um, I would prefer not to go the hourly rate way.
Uh, two years ago, when this was brought up about all the ordinances needing to be updated, I did speak with a company. Um, at the league or at one of our conferences. Um, and the quote was, you know, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, um, where they would come in, start over. But then they don't know what now then is and what we want. Um, I think it's called American Legal. Oh, do you remember, Mister Mayor?
Go ahead.
So that's a codification company. They don't actually draft new ordinances for you. They take the ones you have that are in many pieces and they put them into. A um, online. Codification system, they do some amount of updating as part of that to address things that might be something that isn't completely compliant with the. State statute or something. Um, but they're not doing, no, they're not, they're taking what now then has and just updating it to state statute. And they told me it would take over a year. What do you estimate the time to be?
I'll be honest, my hesitation is that I don't know, once we get into that. If we would spend three years in meetings trying to talk about it. Um, and there's no incentive. For the cost to be, for that time to be shortened up if it's, if it's a flat fee. I'm just being honest.
Mister Mayor. And hourly is risky, um, but we also, or at least I would not expect a contractor. To give an estimate and then, and I'm just gonna throw in numbers, let's say an estimate of ten thousand. and then, and I'm just going to throw in numbers, let's say an estimate of ten thousand dollars. And it, because they're so screwed up and there's so many different things, it costs twenty thousand. And then that contractor has to eat that twenty thousand. So hourly is risky for us. Flat fee is risky for the contractor. I'm comfortable with going with an hourly. We need to get it done. These are ordinances unless you look at an ordinance and it tells a revised date, they're from township date. So they're, they're, they are old. They have not been kept current. And one of the many reasons we haven't is because of the expense to do it. And you know, that's bad on council that we haven't moved that forward over the years. I think it's something we need to look at. You know, whether we have money and we find we have money in the budget this year to start something. If we start with, if Cindy could give us a priority list of our ordinances, whether we tackle the easy ones first or the more, more, more difficult or the ones that give you the more trou, most trouble, we can kind of piece part it. And maybe then in the twenty-sixth budget, we can look at authorizing additional monies to get that accomplished.
Ms. Nash, should you work on the planning and zoning one? You, you've done some work on that one already, haven't you?
I've made some notes on it. I haven't started doing any work on it.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Rainville. I, I don't really have a problem with an hourly rate. My concern would be the same as Cindy's in that, you know, it, it could drag on and on and on, multiple meetings, you know, debating, you know, whatever subsection of an ordinance. And so, you know, I mean, there's that concern that, you know, hourly or bid. And, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to a starting point of just having Cindy, you know, create us an outline, you know, it not like an official estimate, but pay her a couple hours, take a look at it and come up with like a reasonable timeline and a plan and an estimate of what she thinks the cost will be. You know, as, as long as there weren't, you know, double the amount of meetings that we anticipated or something. No, I mean Cindy, you know, she is familiar with now then and what specifically in our ordinances are terrible. And so I, I would think she's in the best position to maybe revise them, but I'm the new guy, so.
This ties back into the residents. So as they go through an application process, what they're stating is it's too much to do this, too much to do this. So there's a, a cost to our city, but what it does is it saves the residents money as they want to go. So it's definitely the right thing to do. The question is, how do we do it? So the great thing is we live in the great state of, or great United States. There's fifty states out there. There's got to be somebody else that does this. And I, I would like to go get some quotes. That's what I would like to do. I, I really, I know Cindy can do it. Ms. Nash can do it. There's no doubt, but let's get some competitive quotes out there. Let's figure out some options.
Well, and thirty or forty thousand dollars does not seem super unreasonable to me considering how much our residents are paying and, you know, how it's potentially impacting development in our city. So.
But it's something we'll probably have to budget for twenty twenty-six. We, we do not have funding right now to tackle it. So I think we've got a little bit of time and then we make sure we, we budget it or something to that. And we'll figure out the best process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryan.
Um, I just noticed that, you know, there was at least, there was a resident at the public forum that we had last week who was, who was talking about something about implementing some sort of flat fee base for, for certain services. And I have no idea if, if that should be something that we factor into anything like this. Or I don't even know how, exactly how that whole process would work or how that would lay out. But, you know, I think that if we're looking at revising these, fees and and or that certainly to me would fall under a strategy to reduce consultant expenses.
It's, it's, it's definitely what the residents are asking for. There's no doubt about it. I asked this question to Ms. Johnson quite some time ago, a couple of months ago, and saying, what are the other sister cities doing? And right now, the flat fee is by far the, I'm going to say the best concept because they know exactly what they're going to pay. And there's no doubt about it. But most of them weren't doing that at this point.
No, they're not.
There wasn't anybody doing it at this point.
No, I couldn't find anybody that was doing the flat fee and I can't imagine that a consultant is going to do anything at a flat fee. Especially because every city has its own specialties. Every city has its own issues. We're not the only one in this situation. Another city that I spoke with again last, last week, they're in the same kind of a process. They inherited a bunch of ordinances that contradict each other. And they're trying to go through and their council wanted in-staff to do it. She was in tears twice when I was talking to her because she said, I can't do this. And it's kind of like what I said at the beginning of the year, that I was going to depend upon our consultants because that's what they do for a living. We could certainly go out for some quotes, but again, it's going to have to take time for somebody to get to know the city and then know exactly what it is. And the council is actually going to have to come up with a real direction is where do we want to go? Where, what do you want to look like in five years? What do we want to look like in ten years? And twenty years? Because as far as I'm concerned, I have not yet seen any real plans of where do you want to have any kind of additional commercial? Where are we going to get the money to improve the roads? I mean, Shane, you sent an email a couple of weeks ago. What was it? If we didn't spend millions? Could you rephrase that? I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was, we had to pay us a, a large amount every year just to get caught up and to maintain what we have. Was that correct?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mr. Mayor, Administrator Johnson. Yes, I mean, we, we in the future, if the city of now that wants to maintain its paved roads, my advice would be that we have to raise the amount of funding that's, that goes to them. Otherwise, we're just going to, you know, the, the size of a balloon is going to get larger.
It basically just comes down to we haven't maintained when we needed to and we haven't replaced when we needed to.
No, I, I think, I really think what the, the root of the problem is.
Yes, we are on the wrong topic. Let, let's hold that back in. We were talking specifically about updating orders. I appreciate your comments, but you are correct, sir.
And that's kind of where it was going anyway, is that we just need to update.
Can we go, they sent it over for bid. Can we do that?
Absolutely.
Find somebody that can do it and hopefully we find three people and Ms. Nash can do it also. And let's see what that costs and bring that back to the council. Is there any more discussion that needs to happen on this one tonight? We don't have to vote on or anything? I guess we got a request for potential action on it.
I would like a motion to direct, please.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to direct the city staff to find some, or to go get some bids for revising their ordinances.
I'll second that. We move it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Madam, you're back.
Thank you.
Please get a poll from Ms. Nash also.
Um, next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution accepting a parcel for residential development for the Parsons. So they are purchasing a parcel off of Pinnaker Road that is not platted, has, is a vacant parcel. And this is taking it through that process to recognize it as a parcel. They would owe a park dedication fee and Pinnaker is a by-use road. So we would also ask them to grant an easement to the city for the right of way on Pinnaker.
Mr. Mayor.
Right of way on what? Off the road?
So some roads we have the right of way for because it was deeded. In some cases, we might have easements for right of way. And in other cases, we, the road's just always been there. So it's by use. So this would be formalizing the easement over it so that if you ever had a road reconstruction.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the parcel for residential development for the person.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Ray, but moving it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one.
Um, I'd like to cover the next three in one presentation.
Yes, please.
So we have A and B addition. Um, it's, it's a five lot subdivision with a new road going into it. On your agenda is three things, the final plat, you've previously seen the preliminary plat earlier this year. Um, a grading agreement and a development agreement and de-restriction for this parcel or for this project. The grading agreement may or may not be needed. We left some flexibility in so the all wellings can either choose to go straight into construction of the whole project this year and record the plat in the development agreement or buy them some time if they would like to do grading this year. And then next year do, or even later this summer, enter into the development agreement and record the plat.
Any concerns at all from you? I read through this and I didn't have any concerns at all.
None for me.
Is there any council, council members that have questions on this?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
There are no questions. I would move that we accept the grading agreement and permit for the A and B addition.
And the final plat?
Three separate resolutions. Yep, sorry.
All right, I'll second your motion. Let me get through a page. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. There's one, you got two more yet. Stand by.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Make a motion to accept the final plat for the A and B addition.
Final plat on page three forty-seven. Let's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ryan.
Also make a motion to approve the development agreement for the A and B addition.
What page did that go down?
Thank you, three seventy-four.
Blanks on that one, last Sunday.
Go, go ahead.
Councilmember Rainville, there are some blanks in the development agreement. And that is because depending on what year they would do this, or if the grading's already been done, the amount of the letter of credit might need to be changed and then city engineer Nelson would figure that out a lot of time before you support.
So they're not dates we need to fill them up. No, that was.
I would, Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we approve the development agreement for A and B addition. Did you do that already? Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to second it?
Second it.
I second it.
All right, perfect. Let's move it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sir, you are done now. All right, Zeg, complete everything for you, Ms. Nash.
Yes, it does.
Ten is complete. We're moving on to number eleven, the sheriff's monthly report. Sir, thank you for being patient.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll talk real fast so everyone can go to bed. The following is a report for the month of April twenty twenty-five. We responded to a hundred and thirty-two calls for service, order bar none, five alarms, fourteen medicals and nine animal calls. Starting with bar none calls on the fourteenth, we responded to an assault between two juveniles. Deputies mediated the situation. Two juveniles were transported to the hospital for evaluation and two were cited for assault and remained at the facility. On the eighteenth, a deputy responded for an assault report. Two juveniles were arrested and charged with fifth degree assault for their actions against staff. Both juveniles were transported to RJC, the juvenile facility. On the twenty-second, deputy responded for a juvenile having a mental health crisis. That juvenile was transported to the hospital by ambulance. On the twenty-eighth, deputy responded to assist with a juvenile having a mental health crisis. That juvenile was also transported to the hospital by ambulance. Moving on to the rest of our calls for service, on the second, in the one nine three hundred block of Rhinestone Street, deputies arrested a male on a felony out-of-county warrant and transported him to jail. On the fourteenth, at Viking and Jasper, deputies responded for a two-vehicle crash with injuries. Both drivers were transported to the hospital by ambulance for suspected minor injuries. Both vehicles were towed and one driver was cited for failure to yield. On the sixteenth, in the one nine three hundred block of Rhinestone Street, a male was arrested for a warrant at a residence without incidents and transported to jail. On the sixteenth, in the eight thousand block of Viking, deputy responded to a personal, personal injury crash at a business. The driver mistakenly hit the gas pedal instead of the brake, ran, ran into a barrier pole in the parking lot. Both vehicle occupants were transported to the hospital with minor injuries. On the twenty-first, in the one nine seven hundred block of Duana Street, deputy responded for a burglary at the business. There had been an alarm call there earlier, but when deputies checked, they found that the business was secure at that time. Uh, when business owners arrived later, they discovered that a safe had been taken during the burglary, but nothing else of value and that there was nothing of value inside the safe either. Uh, the safe was later recovered several miles away in a ditch. Uh, it's currently being processed for DNA. So this case will remain under investigation for property crimes. Time on DNA right now is about a year plus. So that one will sit out in the wind for a while. Uh, at, at this time, there's no current suspects. On the twenty-fourth, in the one eight one hundred block of Uranium Street, uh, deputy responded to a check to welfare of an eighty-seven-year-old female. She was found deceased in the home. Uh, suspected natural causes, RCID division was contacted to investigate, uh, but nothing suspicious at this time. Only other miscellaneous note, Deputy Huff's had a baby girl this morning. So congratulations to them and he'll be on leave for about ten weeks, I believe. So Deputy Ben Urbaniak will be filling in the contract during that time.
Thank you for letting us know. Tell him congratulations, please.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember, please, go ahead.
Lieutenant, uh, Bangard, so on the statistics here on this, yes, a couple, a couple of categories I have questions on assaults up dramatically over twenty twenty-four. Is that primarily bar none?
Almost exclusively.
Uh, misdemeanor arrests, s, uh, six for the same period of twenty twenty-four, thirty-four in twenty twenty-five.
Also majority bar none. So misdemeanor arrests would include the fifth degree assaults that are getting charged or bar none.
And then traffic arrests up significantly, seventeen previous year, forty-seven this year.
Yes, uh, you can, I would say for the most part, thank Deputy Jacobson likes to work a lot of traffic. So it's kind of just what the deputies like to do in their free time, um, how much they like to run traffic and he works your, your Wednesday, Thursday shift and then the other weekends. So for sure on Wednesdays and Thursdays, I would drive, drive a little more carefully maybe.
But these are, these are like arrests. So they've done something more than just.
So arrests on our category means it includes citations. So a traffic arrest would be getting a ticket.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
And the majority of those tickets are going to be misdemeanor violations. There aren't too many petty misdemeanor traffic tickets out there anymore. Almost everything is misdemeanor these days.
Thank you for clarification on that. That's a lot of arrests. They're not arrests, they're tickets.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, sir. Any other questions for? No, thank you. Thank you for being here. And if you want to excuse yourself, you certainly are welcome. You do not. Oh, that's right. You got that coming up. Um, I've requested that Delia read over the fire department muscle report. So take it over to Delia.
Mr. Mayor. All right, uh, monthly calls for April, thirty-one total calls, um, five fire, mutual aid and grass, thirteen medicals, thirteen calls for service. Um, examples are standby, canceled and routed and questions from citizens. This month was a busy month and started out with the grass fire on April fifth. The department responded to a grass fire that was threatening structures in the two hundred and twenty-fifth block at, of Vow Street. The wind had driven a fire across several acres where the department was able to make a stand where it was able to make a stand and allow the fire to move past the buildings into an open field, thus saving a barn full of hay and a storage building full of boats and trailers. We were assisted by Saint Francis, Oak Grove, Elk River and Ramsey Fire Departments. This is an example of the strong relationships that we have with our neighboring departments. Captain Cody Obison and family welcomed a baby girl into our department family in the month of April. We wish the captain and his family much joy and hopefully long restful nights of sleep with their new bundle of joy. Lastly, on April twelfth, firefighter Dietz participated in a charity boxing event in Maplewood. This event pitted police against fire in a charity boxing match. Firefighter Dietz fared well in the event and Saint Francis Fire Crews covered the city of now then for calls for service from five PM to midnight on that night, which allowed our members and their families to support firefighter Dietz at this event. Thank you.
Did it say how well he did?
Yeah. He fared well.
He fared well. You exactly know what that means, but all right. Fared well. Okay, thank you, Delia, for reading that. Uh, let's move to number third.
Mr. Mayor, before we go, I was just thinking, when we talk about mutual aid, um, would it be possible that we could talk to Chief Miller about adding um, the calls where other cities are coming to help us as well as the calls where we're going to help them?
I think we can certainly request that. Ms. Johnson, will you take note and talk to him? He's, he's been very willing to.
Yeah, no, I'm just, that would just be interesting to find out that information. So especially. Yeah, no, I'm just, that would just be interesting to find out that information, so especially because it's, it's, it's at least been mentioned in the report.
That's a perfect delay. It's a council member Glazer's back. If we can move on to number thirteen, administrator update, please.
What kinds of calls should be, what kinds of calls shouldn't be. Um, we also talked about them contacting online directly for some other levels. Rather than going through the nine-one-one system and logging down. Um, after meeting with all of their staff, we sat down and talked with leadership. Um, and we talked with all the D P and that there's nothing currently of record that they are operating now in. Since then, we've done a little bit more bidding. Um, they are continuing to look for something that started the whole process back in the probably seventies, I believe, is what they're thinking. Um, but again, nothing is reported. We haven't done anything. Um, I think it was kind of an ivory and green stuff.
Yeah.
You can tell by the number of calls this month versus last month. I think it was great. I also believe that.
Uh, I spoke with Deborah again today, who's one of the leadership. People there, um, and she was asking me if it was just a CUP for the school or a CUP for the whole thing. My opinion wasn't needed to be for the whole thing to be working, um, because we currently don't have anything. And then Lieutenant, do you have anything you'd like to add about?
I don't think I have much else that you didn't. Yeah, just that it was productive. We'll be having quarterly meetings with this whole leadership group, but Matt going forward, so we can kind of all stay in touch to make sure things are still happening.
Thank you guys for going out there. Just like you said, the coal volume drop has already been substantial, just by being proactive and going out and meeting. So thank you for doing that.
All right, the next item were the action items. I provided the quotes. I wasn't at that meeting. Um, but the action items that were given to me was to provide quotes for these things. Um, I did give that. To everybody in the packet, um, the road study was a map that came to you separately. Um, today, because it was just too large to, to send. Um, it was a roll that, yep, those are the rolled up ones. Um, and I just need direction. What does council want to do? With the rest of those things, because I wasn't a part of that meeting, I'm not sure what the direction was, except to provide numbers.
Perfect. Can we talk, uh, take, let, uh, council member Glazer talk about the estimate you're bringing into this? Because that's the next thing that's on here is, uh, the metal roof. And that's the two brothers of the.
Well, i- i- if you'll notice at the back of that portion of the packet, it, there's a, an email from Mr. Dline stated May seventh. Um, to Ms. Stokoe in regards to this, and um. One of the owners of Minnesota Metal Exteriors had sent an estimate back in twenty twenty-four. Um, Mr. Anderson, her partner, uh, and I believe he's the actual one that came up with the spec that got up on the roof and determined that this is, this is an overlay application. Um, and so when I saw that, saw that the estimate wasn't in here, I, I acquired this, you know, the official estimate, the price stays, their price stayed the same from October till now.
That is the official estimate that's missing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, didn't know that. So seventeen thousand four hundred, whether, that is what they said was for an estimate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So wasn't there an additional estimate from? What file construction?
No, it was just the two for the roofing.
You're looking at that, yes, you're looking at that right now.
Is the first estimate is wild construction.
So which is seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, this other one seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. Seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty and seventeen thousand four hundred. That's the two estimates we got.
Correct.
Um, and council, if you have any questions about what needs to be done on the roof. Administrator from Rum River did say, because he did go out and helped decide what needed to be done.
And a re-roof would be adequate, in your opinion? And that's the same thing you told me you were gonna.
Correct, not a tear off because of the, the. And Andy can attest to this, that the, the steel that's on the roof now is actually providing. Uh, some structural strength that's, that we would want to maintain and just overlay.
Are both these bids from people in Now Then?
Uh, one company is in Anoka and one company, um, is Minnesota Metal Exteriors is in Now Then, Old Viking Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, um, Dana, Dana Henjum is, um, with Wild Construction.
Say that one more time.
Dana at the back is with Wild Construction.
Okay. That's on Breaking Boulevard also? No.
No, it's in Anoka. It's the city of Anoka proper.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
Minnesota Metal has also done work for us before. Um, they did the pavilion. In Now Then Park, I believe it was, and the garage roof in the baseball.
They did a good, do good quality work.
I've not heard that there was any issues from a few years back.
Very much. Hey, any other points of discussion that need to take place? We have a resident on this.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
This was part of our capital improvement. For uh, uh, discussion. Um, so we didn't have, we just asked for direction for bids.
Hmm.
Um, which, uh, staff has provided. Um. I would think we would need a resolu-, an R C N, a resolution to move forward with it, and we were looking at. Um, for capital improvement was the twenty-six budget. Um, if we find, I mean, we, we have capital park, we have capital improvement money within the park.
We have part one money.
So we, in that, yes, so if we choose to go forward this year, we can do that.
Yeah, so we just bring it up next month when we have an R, we'll have an R C A with it.
See in a resolution.
We've got two bids. Do we need a third bid if it's under this dollar, under this dollar amount? So we're okay? All right, any other conversation on that? Natalie, I think we're coming back to you or Ms. Johnson. Will you talk about the next one?
Um, you had asked for estimates for driving the basketball court and a pickleball court. Um, so I believe Mr. Glaze went out for quotes on that, and we do also have that, so just looking for direction on that. Um, I believe we would have to use parks maintenance for that, because that's not really a capital improvement.
Well, same thing on that. We're gonna need an R C A to move forward with it.
Right, I was just looking for direction though, as based on these numbers, did council want?
This is the nineteen hundred and twenty dollars?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted direction.
That certainly doesn't seem excessive to me. Um, it's always nice if we have two bids, but. Councilmember Brian, and anything on that?
I think it's just a matter of where, as long as if it, if it fits in the existing budget, either in twenty-five or twenty-six, then it could theoretically be investigated further. Because we know the residents have been asking for that, so.
Couldn't it go just into park funds because it's part of the park?
No, Mr. Mayor, I remember this thought of, this would be a neat inside of, you know, um, in your regular park maintenance budget, and there is.
Okay, so we'll bring back an R C A for this, is what, what I'm saying. Okay, next one.
The other was, you know, studying maps, you don't ask for a copy of that, that could have been provided.
Did anything get published with it, or is it just the map? This is all we get? For, for, for the amount of money we spent?
A lot of colors on it.
Yeah, there's not a lot. Um, Mr. Nelson, I sent you the. Um. Agreement or quote or the, the scope of it. And he was gonna talk with me, but unfortunately, because I was gone last week, I didn't get it to him until today, so. Um, I am providing that to you, and hopefully next month I'll be giving more of an update of what we need and what it means.
So this wasn't your agency, this was somebody else doing this.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right, so. I recommend we do not go with this organization. Straightly, we've got a map, it's a good start, but.
Um, and then the I T was already presented. Um, and then the budget update was something that was prepared that you guys were looking for. Um. Lexi was able to put it all together while I was gone. She pulled all of the reports. Um, we can go to it, it's basically.
Four twenty-four, is that what you refer to?
Page four twenty-four. Um, as of the last payroll, we view sixteen point seven point eight, I'm sorry, sixteen point seven eight percent of the budget. Uh, for full-time wages. Uh, the overtime, sixty-seven hundred dollars. The administrative professional services is up because of Mr. Boyle's. Um, and public works is viewed sixty-three hundred dollars, sixty-three eighty-two. Um, the overtime comes through, from the full-time wages, and if you look for, you know, a quarter of the year passed and we haven't used that yet, so. Lori will be here to speak to a little bit of this as well.
Mr. Mayor, representative of council, uh, last year when we budgeted for, um, staff. We budgeted for three full-time staff and two part-timers at thirty hours each a week. And, and you have not maintained that, and so the work needs to be done, and. The only staff you have to do it are the ones that are here. So that's where the overtime's coming in. We did not budget for overtime, assuming that you'd be fully staffed. So that's why.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Is the, the overtime here, does that include, um, the adjustment for, um. Ms. Johnson's new rate of pay?
It does not.
And then as far as Mr. Boyle's concerned, I was taking a look at that. At seventeen thousand dollars, he, he looks like he's only been averaging maybe ten hours a week since January fifteen?
It might be the average of that. But it's, I mean, he hasn't been working a lot. I, his last bill is in the claims. I don't remember.
Four hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Seven thousand something. We looked at it, yeah.
Any other key takeaways or points of discussion on this one? Is that complete your portion?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I was just waiting for. They had it.
So it sounds like no questions. You're complete? Moving on to new business, say it again, ma'am?
Move on.
All right, moving on, fourteen, or number fourteen, new business. So we're looking at approving resolution. Oh, there was one more point before we move off of yours. You had, uh, something you learned in your conference that I asked you to share that I just learned about today. Please bring that up.
I did, um, and it's a little uncomfortable to say, but as we, as I was going through the conference. At one point, I asked the presenter to have any other cities that were like us with no services. Stand up and introduce themselves so that I could speak with them.
Can you explain no services real quick?
Those services are no liquor store, no police department, no library, no pool, um.
No water, no sewer.
No sewer.
A stormwater.
Um, no electric company.
No electric.
We're, so we're not billing the residents for really much of anything at all. Um, those cities that I spoke with. I actually had two administrators, who are also part of this class, come up to me and they were thinking about applying for the job. And they asked, well, what do you have to do? And so I said, well, we have the fire department and staff. And both of them kind of chuckled at me and said, well, what does the administrator do that? Um, so I did talk with the other cities. That are more like us, that we don't have all of that billing and stuff, and they are just with a clerk treasurer.
Yes.
Position. Um, I don't know what the decision was, and maybe council member Brian or Rainville could. Enlighten us as to why we went to an administrator in the first place. Um, I am.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian, go ahead, please.
Well, we started out, we didn't start out directly with an administrator. That was done after I was gone. We started out with, with the kind of, at least. Uh, some sort of, um, person that could be in charge of the. A person that could be in charge of staff as well as handle the clerk, the clerk duties, because, because of the, the way the statutory city is set up. We, we would still have, you know, we're required to have a city clerk. So the original position wasn't directly an administrator, but it was like an administrative clerk or administrative clerk treasurer, I believe. That was where we started.
Yeah. Administrator.
This ties directly, uh, in with, uh, what council, council member, uh, Glazer talked about in, bringing this up, and. So I was a little bit shocked last, because we had talked about bringing in a city administrator. This is the information that she told me this today. I'm like, well, that ties exactly into what you had stated is, like, do we need a city administrator? But if we don't have any of the services, the question coming back to the council is, do we really need an administrator? And I was like, fully changed position on that, that I don't think we need one anymore. So I, I had done a one-eighty, but knowing that, that, that's like an aha moment is. When you get it from Lincoln Minnesota Cities and you're talking to others in a similar situation, they don't have.
They didn't, and that, like I said, the two that were interested in it asked what they would be administering. And I said, you know, Scott took a lot of the, the complaint calls. He took a lot, you know, he negotiated a lot of the contracts. I mean, he did do a lot and took a lot of phone calls and was able to deal with some of the residents and. That sort of stuff, but as far as administering a police force or a library or the pool or, you know, those kinds of things, uh, we don't do that. Most of the cities, a lot of the cities actually have electric companies that are coming from the rivers and then they're billing for their electric. You know, they have city sewer and water. I. Out of, uh, all the people that were there, in just my class alone, there was eighty-eight, I believe, cities representative or, you know, representative. And a very few don't have city sewer water. Everybody else pretty much does, even these tiny little towns have it, but, um, that wasn't anything that was ever in Now Then's plan, so. Those are things that you need extra staff for and doing and administering.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Hey, I want to tell you, I appreciate you giving props to Mr. Lainer, but I, I do want to tell you that I think you worked a hell of a lot harder than he ever did for the city in Now Then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I think that, yep. I'm very uncomfortable with comments being made about a previous employee's. Performance by somebody that was not on the council at the time. And. I just think that's very unfair.
Hmm.
Um, you can have your beliefs, you can listen to whoever you want to listen to, and they can tell you whatever they want to tell you. Um, but you were not on the council at the time. Um. If there were any deep, if there were any deficiencies, it was on the previous council. In that we, if we didn't feel that he wasn't performing, we never did the performance evaluation. It was put on the agenda numerous times. It was removed from the agenda by, and I'm not gonna tarnish that person, but it was removed. By an elected official, and so Mr. Lainer never had the opportunity to have a discussion with council. Just to hear that we thought he was faulty. And so I think it's very unfair that a person who was not on that council. Is criticizing that previous employee. Mr. Lainer worked really hard and.
Please, please wrap that up.
Um, I, I just think that Mr. Lainer worked really hard. He was in, it was a hard position for him based on. Um. Direction or lack thereof provided to him.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rainbow, while, while you may be uncomfortable with my position and my opinion on that, my expressing that isn't any different than you defending Mr. Swenson for, for. The comments that he's made on Facebook about people that he had no contact with prior, prior to being on the council.
We're getting, we're getting.
So, so I don't want to get off topic, but, you know, let's just drop some of that stuff.
Please, let's not get off topic. Guys, we had a very instructive conversation going here, and I would like to rejuvenate that. Um, I think this is critical information that she brought back, and what I would ask is, um. If we're comfortable doing a motion tonight, I know you had brought it up about council member Glazer about potentially canceling this. But I, I would like, I'll, I'll just make a motion. I would like to cancel our search for the city administrator. Um, I don't think we need it, and I think it ties into the next thing on the agenda is we, we have the potential to retain Delia. As a full-time member, but.
Mr. Mayor, so.
Go ahead.
You know, to, to what you were just saying, if. Where, I had some questions about moving Ms. Stokoe from part-time to full-time, because. You know, conditions were stipulated back in what I think, uh, Delia and Shelley were hired in November. They were hired to work twenty-five to thirty hours a week. Thirty hours waited on, on the front end because of training. And so I had some hesitation to this, because we were gonna move from, you know, fifty to sixty hours part-time. To now a full-time person, an F T E, um, with. No indication of what the benefits are gonna cost, starting, um, January one, twenty twenty-six. I would, I would like to have known that. Um, and adding, and then a part-time employee. If. If you're serious about moving to. Eliminate the the city administrator's position.
Very serious, sir.
Then I I think that's, this is something that that I would get on board with.
Any other discussion on cancelling the city administrator? It did make a motion on if anybody would like to second that motion. Um, or if you want, you got a second? All right. Any other discussion before we vote on?
Can I ask for clarification? Are you proposing not hiring a city administrator or just cancelling the search right now and sort of reassessing and figuring it out?
It would be canceled the search. It would be not hiring a city administrator and then it would be moving um. Ms. Johnson to a salary position. Because if she, if you take the city administrator out, she needs to become salary.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, um previously the uh city clerk treasurer was not. A salaried position. It was hourly based. Um, and it was um. Uh, very busy position and there was a lot of difficulty during that that timeframe and we went through a lot of. Aces. Um, now there is more people to support. That position, so it's good. I don't know that it would be uh behoove us to to move it to a salaried position. I don't know if. Natalie has agreed to that.
I think we have to if we're gonna cancel the city administrator position is. Now, again, we don't have to vote on this tonight.
I I was just gonna say, I I guess I I don't disagree with. Your line of thought, but I I have not had a chance to really think this through and this is sort of, I think, a big thing for the city, so. I I guess my preference would be not to make a vote on this tonight, but.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
So just to to clarify, councilmembers, once are you saying? Vote, um not to vote on what? Going back to a city clerk treasurer or cancelling the search? Process or? And and the reason I ask is that. The applications are open until like May twenty-third. So at this point, South Central has done. Not the heavy lifting of the process. So if we cancel them before the twenty-third. We then save the majority, I would, I'm assuming, because I don't know.
Yeah, let me clarify. I'm okay canceling it. I think that's great and I might. Agree with you guys ultimately. I just, I feel like I need to give it a little more thought as to running our city, you know, rather than. Having three minutes to think about it.
And and saying any time to think is okay. We've never questioned that in coming back. So let me clarify my motion. My motion would be to cancel the search. Uh, with S C S E. That's my motion. Okay. Any other discussion on? No, no. All right, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
So then, Mister Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Direction to the staff would be to notify S C S C to mark.
Yes, ma'am.
And find out what our pro-rated bill will be.
And then I think it comes back, we can at the next council meeting, uh one, we can discuss wages for Natalie. If that needs to be talked about, will we can do a salary position? I I think we're, I don't know. I'll just leave it at that for now.
I I would like to, Mister Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I I would like to know if it if by F S L A it needs to be. Um, salaried versus not. So that should be part of our discussion, whatever discussion.
It has to be.
It has to be part of it.
I believe the, or even our attorney said it's fine on an interim basis, but if we eliminate the city administrator, it has to be become a salary position because.
And I I don't, that's not clear in my head.
It's a function of roles and responsibilities, um leadership supervising. Yes, historically, um clerks. Um, have remained um. Non-exempt, um but that's um. Obviously, that that should be the case, so.
And Mister Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we had talked about this, you know, in council, previous council, F S L A rules and regulations have changed too, so. Let's find out from our attorney if if we are canceling this and what can go with this. That what is the, what are, what's the legal requirement that we are under? As far as that type of a position.
Absolutely, we need to know something.
And Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I believe when we did have, and and Councilmember Rainville can correct me if I'm wrong, but. When we did have an actual city clerk treasurer. We did not have a reporting structure where that person, basically everyone on staff reported directly to council at the time. There was really no. No reporting um. Structure in place so that that wouldn't necessarily have uh. Uh, required that person going exempt as well as at the time, we didn't necessarily even know that that person was supposed to be exempt if they if they were.
To get clarifications, what?
Okay. Yeah, the next one. All right, can we move on to fourteen A? With the. Ms. Johnson, you want to talk on the phone, please?
I do. I would like to um first of all state that both Lexi and Delia are doing a great job. They're catching on quickly. Every day they're taking a little bit more um off of my plate. Lori could probably attest to that because she's working primarily with Lexi now and she's doing most of the data entry. Um, for everything and running the reports. Delia has kind of become um my extra help. And she's been able to help prep. The packets. As you can see, this was a very large packet and I would say she did ninety percent of the work on that um last week. With very little direction because I couldn't get to her while I was in class. Um, she did a great job. I don't want to. Lose somebody who is this valuable because at some point she's going to need all of those benefits. I have had Lori run those numbers um for twenty twenty-six as far as health benefits. But we have not seen any numbers yet. Last year we were anticipating a ten percent increase and we ended up getting actually a decrease. It wasn't a huge amount, uh because our rating is not that high. Um, so we'll just have to wait and see and I unfortunately you don't find out on health insurance, um Mister Glazer, until after our budget is. Been approved. We won't get our numbers until October. Is typically when it happens. In August, sometimes they'll give me an idea what the trend is. Um, because the school districts go first. Um, so as far as knowing what that cost is, I just truly believe that between Lexi and Delia, they've been able to help a lot. Um, they're taking a lot off of my plate. Again, I I do state that and every day they're learning more and more. If we can get our ordinances up to date and give more standard. Um, handouts for if you want to build a building, this is the answer for all lots, not just. It depends. Cindy knows I hate that. Um, and so does Delia. She hates that. She's done a really good job with um. Doing all the paint by numbers and getting things up to date. Um, as far as that and helping me with anything that I ask. Um, it is staff's recommendation to move her to full-time. Um, and open up that twenty-hour-a-week position to help fill in. Um, just for days when, as it was last week when I wasn't there, Mary was able to step in and help answer some calls. I don't want to have to depend upon a council member for the office to be able to stay open. And with that said, I do have one date already set up um. The twelfth of June, um the office. Or the thirteenth will have to be closed, um because I don't have any staff available that day and Miss Rainville's not around either, but. Anyhow, that is staff's recommendation is to please move forward with making Delia full-time.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, I'm I'm estimating about seventeen thousand. In benefits, including whatever salary is. So that includes para FICA, Medicare. Um, health insurance, life insurance. And any, any, any other insurance that are covered there and leave. Things like that. So what's about seventeen thousand for twenty twenty-four?
And she has declined to take it for twenty twenty-five. For the remainder.
Any other questions to Ms. Johnson or coming?
Obviously, full-time does become benefit. There does uh. Does earn benefits that aren't necessarily health insurance related.
Right.
Um, what what would the that cost be for the rest for the remainder of the year? Is that the seventeen? You were saying that the seventeen is for next year.
The seventeen is for next year, but this year it would just be the additional ten hours a week that she'd be working and you you'd imply it. You'd apply the para and the FICA and the Medicare raise. I don't know what that is off the top of my head, so.
It's probably a lot less than seven.
Yes, yes.
Mister Mayor. That seventeen thousand, is that increased as compared to her saying thirty hours a week or is that?
That's forty hours a week. That's full-time.
That's just everything. So the real increase from the thirty hours a week with the addition of the benefits is something less than seventeen?
Yep, it's seventy-five hundred, seventy-six hundred. A little bit more than that, but yeah.
I would make a motion to uh approve her going full-time and. Start collecting benefits, January first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
So Mister Mayor.
With discussion apparently.
Well, I just, you had said, I guess I unless I heard it wrong, you're saying she starts January one, twenty twenty-six, but it's the benefits that start. January one, twenty twenty-six.
Correct, the health benefits.
Yeah, yeah. I want her to go away till January.
Will you, will you say your motion again?
Sure. I'm gonna make a motion to uh immediately move Delia to full-time and start benefits. On January first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll I'll second the motion for the second time.
Uh, just, I would just look going back through here again and I don't see, is the hourly rate changing or is it staying where it is?
It would stay where it is right now.
Any other discussion?
Is it, is part of this motion then also to hire? Start the hiring process for, and that's a separate party, that's a separate resolution.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Congratulations, Delia. Get your hopes up. No, you got your hopes.
Mister Mayor.
Ma'am, go ahead.
I would move the resolution um twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. Um, approving a posting of receptionist administrative assistant position not to exceed. Twenty hours per week with a pay rate of twenty to twenty-three an hour.
Page four twenty-eight.
And four twenty-eight.
I'll second.
This, we have some, Mister Mayor.
You're gonna have some discussion, yes, yes.
So if. Hypothetically, if we're moving uh away from a an administrator and moving to an administrative or treasurer. We now, we now have. Only. Three full-time, three F T Es. Um, where we had previously had three F T Es and two part-time people at twenty-five to thirty hours a week.
That's correct.
Um, based on. You know, um, I'm assuming that. By eliminating the search with South Central Service Cooperative, that Mister Boyle's contract would also be. Terminated. So my question is, um, and though I. Typically tend to err on the on the more conservative side, is twenty hours a week for a receptionist? When we only, when now we're down to three staff, is twenty hours gonna be enough? And therefore limiting the the number of candidates that we're gonna be able to get to fill that position. I I think we need to, I think we need to evaluate that, that time. Um, component.
Mister Mayor. I would, I would agree with Councilmember Glazer, um, because there are times when everybody's busy. And you just can't get to the phone. Uh, I know right now if we can't get to the phone, I we just let it ring. Um, if everybody is busy with doing something, um, it is very difficult sometimes when you're in the middle of a financial. Uh, no, just like balancing and going, working on the journal entries, um, which is a lot of the stuff that I do and Lexi does. And if Delia's working on the packet, we just kind of let it go. Now, Miss Riley um has stated, you know, she. Kind of took her leave and now she's back and as she can, uh she does want to be done before the summer starts. Um, she'll stay on the ten hours or whenever she can come in uh for now. But she does want to be done and I don't want to be down to just uh three F T E. Because that'll be very difficult.
So going out, Mister Mister Glazer's comment with the recommendation, move it from twenty hours to thirty hours, would that be your recommendation? Because you're gonna be down to one part-time person at this point.
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully that would bring um in some good candidates still that would want thirty hours a week.
We already, we already had a motion, we already had a second.
I would uh amend my motion to um. Have it be up to thirty hours.
And I'll amend my second to her amendment.
Perfect. Any other discussion for move the vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Updated to thirty hours. Okay. Next one, Ms. Johnson.
Um, I was asked by the seniors, um. Through a council member to find out what the cost would be for a handicap button door. Was able to get two quotes. Um, one is significantly higher than the other because there seemed to be using all new materials. And not necessarily reusing what is here. Um, the other company did come out, take a look at it. Uh, not only with the photos, I believe they provided photos of what they can still use, um, and it is significantly less. Um, again, that would have to come out of general government building. Maintenance because it basically it's kind of maintenance. It's not really an equity. Or an asset because it's really not over five thousand dollars if we choose to go through. Um, I don't know if more than one council member has been contacted by the seniors to do this or.
As I sat down with the residents, the seniors, and it was brought up during that. I think it was actually email I got before and I would, I just followed up. That's, that's where the request came from, from the seniors using this and we have one that uh really struggles with get the door open. So that's where it came from.
Side benefit of uh eliminating someone needing to unlock the door for the seniors, like does it have a locking mechanism? You know what I mean? Is it like a magnet?
It will still be lockable, but they will still need some sort of access to it, yes.
Um, well, well, I think the um. The ability to do this. Maybe beneficial. I I think I think we need to look at the, that side entrance a little bit more. In depth. It, so, you know, you've got a very small platform outside there. And it it's kind of a blind entrance with not having any window lights. So and and now we're talking about adding a a powered door component. Um, involving senior citizens that are already struggling on their feet. And if somebody pushes that button from the inside, for instance, and somebody's standing right outside of that door. And because the person inside couldn't see that person standing outside, then we might have, you know. Unfortunately, um knocked somebody off their feet. So I I I think. While it's probably necessary, I think. We need to look at the bigger picture of it. Do we need a new door?
Yeah, I I agree.
And and look at it in 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 more depth and and uh from a a greater uh element of safety.
The good news is we already got some quotes. We got something rolling here, which which feels really good for the residents, but I agree. We don't want to make it worse than, can we just shelf that one and take it out?
Do we want to make, Mister Mayor, do we want to make a change and to to get an updated quote for what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's probably a better idea.
Looking at it because I also know that one side of if this was done is the door will actually close, which it doesn't now.
Okay. So make a motion to get an updated quote for the door, uh tying in with this quote and get a total cost. That would be.
That sounds like a great motion that you just made. I'll second it.
All right, perfect. We got a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's do a vote. All those in favor say aye. Thank you for bringing that up. That's perfect.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmembers.
I would like to make a motion declaring that Fire Chief Miller, who is eligible for para and this notice shall be provided as required by it, by para.
Perfect, I'll second it. Is there any other discussion? All right, let's move to vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. No, motion carries. Hey, thank you. I don't know that we want to talk about goals tonight.
I was just gonna say, Mister Mayor, it's ten minutes to ten. I don't know how much farther I'm going to be able to. How much more we want to go.
Can we table goals for tonight and bring it back up at the next meeting? Everybody good, table? All right, good. Moving on to the next one. All right.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmembers.
Are we going on to old business or something that was uh moved from the consent agenda?
There's a couple.
Yeah, we've still got, uh,
What am I missing?
We're on Facebook one.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
You go ahead.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, yes.
Um, Ms. Yeager and I have talked a couple of times about having the council being so new, and I sent you all an email this afternoon um, is to having a meeting on the June second or June fifth to talk about the budget, the budget process, how it works, where the money comes from, where it goes, so that Lori can help explain to the council. Um, would it, if one of those days works, is it possible we could table all of this and just take it up that day as well?
Table the remand, the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, no, the C I P, I'd like, like, get adopted.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
So.
All right, so the question is, I heard we could look at your calendars and see, you said June, what, what? During second, about a state.
Or fifth.
Fifth, I'm back.
I'm good.
And hopefully we could make it a little bit shorter meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. I, and that would be fine, you know?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
June fifth. Okay, you're, you're here as long as you're here? All right, so June fifth, table the rest of it, minus C I P.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, your meeting on the seventeenth, maybe we can just or is that too, too long for that night?
Mr. Mayor, could I make a proposition?
Go ahead.
The Facebook comments and the personnel policy can be postponed to June tenth. And then the C I P could be covered now.
Well, yeah.
Goals could also be moved to June tenth, which is the regular.
So we wouldn't have to do an additional meeting on the fifth, is what you're saying?
Oh, no, no.
That would be a separate budget meeting that includes nothing from this package.
All right, would everybody be okay with that?
With the fifth?
Yeah, just talk about the budget.
Putting it in right now.
A short budget meeting.
Yeah, that sounds, I love good meetings.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, go, go ahead.
Are we also going to then defer the Veterans Memorial? Ad hoc committee?
If we could.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I would request that we do, so.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I I would just ask, um, because this is new to us, ad hoc committees, um, that you look at the R C A, and if you have any suggestions, one of the things I wanted to do on this is that we include our veterans. And so if you have any existing veteran, uh, any veteran that lives in the city, or they have children that are in the military, I just want a veteran's point of view on it. So if you have somebody and you could reach out to them, I'm assuming this will pass. And, um, if you could reach out to them to see.
No, you reach out to me.
Yeah. If you would.
All right, we're gonna cover.
Contact them and see if there's be something they'd be interested in, maybe already have some names for the next meeting, rather than started scratch, looking for names at the next. Yeah. I mean, I know when their daughter was killed in, in, in service, and she, he's still, he and his wife still are here, but.
I would like to move to Lori to, uh, talk about C I P, please.
Hey. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we had already met and discussed this on April twenty-second, twenty-third. Um, included in here was, uh, thirty, forty thousand dollars for park improvements. Um, sixty-one thousand is still in the building capital for council chamber improvement. And then the road improvements are at four hundred and ninety thousand, and it's going to go up a little because there's an additional road. I think it's, uh, two hundred and eighteen, and and it's going to be five hundred and sixty thousand, but all of that stuff can be discussed during the budget process. This is a planning document, and I would just recommend up the limits.
Can I just bring it up? So to reiterate what, um, Lori's saying, as a financial consultant, this is a plan that says, hey, we are going to spend some money. What it's not doing is determining the amount. We have the full ability to adjust everything here when we go into budgeting. So it's really just approving a plan. It's more of a formality than anything else.
Gives us a direction of what we're going into the budget.
Yeah, because I know the police chief wanted like a lot of money, and I don't want to give him that much money, but conceptually, yes, yeah. And that's it. Okay, so you're, you're looking for a motion. Who's gonna, who's got enough energy to give the motion at?
Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the, um, to adopt the twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan and equipment replacement plan.
Second.
Okay. We'll move it for vote. Any other discussion? No discussion, moving to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.
So, Mr. Mayor, just so that we're.
Motion carries, go ahead.
Okay, we're clear. So we are, there's a most, I will make a motion to table fourteen D E and G and fifteen A to the June, what date meeting? June twenty. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that also includes item number fifteen for the personnel policy.
Correct, fifteen A, yep.
Okay, I must have missed that. All right, councilmember Ryan.
All right.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we got it.
Before we get a motion to adjourn, I, I, I am, I would like to apologize for the comment that I made, though I am going to hold on to my opinion. This was the, uh, the wrong place to make the comment that I made earlier about Mr. Lainer.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, sir. All right, Mr. Ryan, or Councilman Ryan.
Do we need to vote on the table link?
There is a vote on the table.
Yeah, sure. What's the vote, what's the vote?
The table.
So we got a motion. We get a second on it? You already seconded. Okay, all those in favor table it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Mayor.